Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, October 8, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And if you're a guest speaker joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add Bill 1545 to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
This is the amendment, you guys.
Can we take a roll call vote?
Mr. Charland.
Yes.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle.
No.
Mr. Mosley.
No.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Yes.
Ms. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Strasburger, chair.
Yes.
I scored no spot.
Okay.
There's only eight of us here.
Yeah.
Four, four. My apologies. It cannot be added.
That moves us on to public comment. I would like to remind... Pardon?
Did the motion fail?
Yes.
I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are, or may be before a city council, profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Downtown, Global Intelligence Society candidate for mayor, Pittsburgh, 2025, globalinformationintelligencenetwork.net. A concern of this council, and I share it, is with the vote and votes. Vote by voter verification for whom is one of my primary first initiatives, and also neighborhoods. People say to me, "You make a lot of sense, but I'm a lifelong Democrat." Seriously? Seriously, Ms. Kelsmith and Ms. Warwick, who are talking while I'm trying to do public comment? Why is it that she is allowed to do this, Ms. Strasburger? Why can't you stop these people when we're trying to do public comment at this table? Why can't you do that? This is disgusting behavior. Lifelong Pittsburgh Democrat, so we can't shift gears here. The statue outside of this building is a statue of Richard Colaguri. I'm going to focus on his 1973 and 1977 involvement in mayoral elections. In 1973, Peter Flaherty decided he was going to run for reelection, and the endorsement of the Democratic Party was not for Flaherty, it was for Richard Colaguri. In the primary, the winner of both the Democratic and Republican nomination was Flaherty. That's both and. In 1977, when Flaherty left to go to Washington in the Department of Justice, the opening allowed the president of council, who was Richard Colaguri, to become the mayor. But the Democratic Party did not endorse him. In the primary, they endorsed Forrester. In the primary, Forrester won, and Richard Colaguri decided that he was going to run as an independent in the general election, and he won. Ungrande corore. He had great heart. He was from Greenfield. I'm very familiar with Greenfield. Gemma Santoro was my maternal Italian grandmother. He was concerned about neighborhoods. The symbol of the statue outside of the city-county building of Richard Colaguri means independence. It means that you don't have to be Democrat or Republican in order to support the people of this city. That is what I represent. That is what I think we should draw on. The civility that is lacking on this council when people do public comment by people who are actually exiting the council is out of line.
Our next speaker is Carlino Giampolo.
Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. My testimony yesterday, underlying Barbara Warwick's accountability, ended with this statement. You have brought shame to this entire city council, and there is more to be said about that shame. You do not have the strong moral character required to be a council member. Time to resign. Let's continue. Prior to the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow, I was never harassed, nor did I ever have to call 911. In little over one month, I have visited the police station nine times to file incidents of harassment and separately called 911, please don't talk, Barbara, 17 times. You are the face, voice, and leader of the skateboarders. You have made no effort to reach out to them to stop the illegal activities. Your lack of strong moral character has brought shame to this entire city council. Time to resign. The skateboarders have been emboldened and feel entitled to do whatever they want, including illegal activities, because they have your full support. Your lack of strong moral character has brought shame to this entire city council. Time to resign. You were dishonest with council member Bob Charland at a June 16, 2025, Standing Committee meeting for the flawed and disgraceful naming of our playground. You told him you were not sure if you represented Panther Hollow, with full awareness that that was untrue. Your dishonesty has brought shame to this entire city council. Time to resign. You were dishonest with me on October 2, 2025, when a front of my home was vandalized in the incident I described yesterday. You dishonestly told me that there were numerous residents in Panther Hollow who support the illegal skate park, and yet you could not produce any of those names. Your dishonesty has brought shame to the entire city council. Time to resign. You are a betrayer. When the now-called Mauglin Connector project was made known, I initially led the fight to end that roadway, protecting both Panther Hollow and your neighborhood of the Run. That triumph helped you get elected. You then betrayed me and the longtime residents of Panther Hollow. Your betrayal has brought shame to this entire city council. Time to resign. I will end today's testimony as I did yesterday. You have brought shame to this entire city council, and there is more to be said about that shame. You do not have the strong moral character required to be a council member. Time to resign.
Our next speaker is Justin Hunt.
Good morning. My name is Justin Hunt. I'm a resident of Shadyside and a director at downtown-based Elmhurst. I'm here for the second time to speak against the proposed expansion of mandatory inclusionary zoning, which has a track record of failure across the United States. And alternatively, I propose that we make the program voluntary and properly incentivized. Pittsburgh has experienced some of the highest rent growth across the United States in 2024, while unsurprisingly having some of the lowest levels of housing development. This came while growing cities such as Austin, Denver, Phoenix, and Raleigh experienced significant rent decreases in 2024. These cities all built significantly more housing than Pittsburgh, unsurprisingly. I commend city council for taking on this issue that affects so many Pittsburghers, but urge you to pass policy that has a track record of success. As other cities have done, I see great potential in the city investing in systems to track housing development. First, so that we know the exact status of our new housing projects. And second, so that we create policy that actually keeps rents down and assists with upward mobility for the residents of Pittsburgh, because that's what we all want. For those of you on council who have a negative taste and feeling towards the development community, I'm here to ask for further conversation and to work together so that we can grow Pittsburgh. The development community has created many amazing pieces of our current city and for our city's future, whether that's the innovation going on in Hazelwood, the new housing, and produce terminal in Lawrenceville, the multi-year renovation of Bedford dwellings, and a new office building in the Hill District, a new hospital and waterfront housing in the South Side, a new squash and education center and commercial kitchen in Larimer, and new housing over brand-new retail in East Liberty. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to continued conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Rhodes.
Hi, my name is John Rhodes. I live in Polish Hill. I serve as a board member of affordable housing nonprofit City of Bridges Community Land Trust, and I'm a member of the Housing Justice Table. I'm here to speak in favor of the common sense zoning reforms contained in 1545, especially mandatory citywide zoning with appropriate bonuses. I testified a couple of weeks ago about how mandatory inclusionary zoning will help make every neighborhood of Pittsburgh a place where people of all incomes can find a home, and that inclusionary zoning only succeeds with density. Unfortunately, it seems likely that mandatory IZ may be taken off the table soon. I find it saddening that we may take away one opportunity to ensure socioeconomic diversity where we need it most. I understand that the proposal to amend citywide IZ into a voluntary program is hot off the presses. I hope that we take a little time so that the public has a chance to review the policy and provide some more thoughtful and fulsome feedback. But, that being said, today I thought I'd just speak on another component of the bill, eliminating parking minimums and how that can make our city and my neighborhood, Polish Hill, a more affordable, inclusive, and transit-friendly place. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, parking minimums dramatically increase the cost of building low-income housing. One study found that minimum parking requirements raise housing costs by 13% for families without cars. Another study showed if affordable housing developments are required to build a parking space for every unit, on average, it increases rent by 12.5%. Since I want to talk about how eliminating parking minimums will affect Polish Hill, I think it's necessary to mention that several neighbors of mine often speak out against allowing more housing, often citing concerns about traffic and parking. That was a common objection to upzoning that would have allowed an apartment building across the street from the Heron Avenue Busway Station. Ironically, the exclusionary zoning those objectors fought to perpetuate only allows townhomes, which will likely be priced around $1 million, each with two car garages. If there was an apartment building next to the transit station instead, each unit would have been at least 20 times more likely to have no car at all. 31% of apartments in the neighborhood have no car. Meanwhile, less than 2% of owner-occupied homes have no car. But that speaks to the nature of the bigger problem in my neighborhood: displacement. In the 11 years between 2012 and 2022, Polish Hill lost 1/6 of its apartments. That's 62 fewer apartments that would house families who are more likely to be low to moderate income, more likely to have no car, and more likely to be dependent upon public transit. Meanwhile, in that same 11-year time span, the number of households in Polish Hill that have three or more automobiles quadrupled, going from 16 to 64. All of those were owner-occupied homes. The increase in autos in the neighborhood is entirely due to owner-occupied homes. But the really alarming fact is that many of the properties in Polish Hill, where apartments used to stand, have been replaced with concrete parking pads. So eliminating parking minimums, allowing ADUs, and incorporating density bonuses into mandatory IZ are a holistic approach to pairing growth with opportunity. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack Billings.
My name is Jack Billings. I live downtown in Councilman Bobby Wilson's district. I am the research chair of Pro Housing Pittsburgh, a local organization that advocates for abundant and affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh, and I'm speaking today on Pro Housing Pittsburgh's behalf. We are in favor of the amendments to Council Bill 2025 1545, the Housing Needs Assessment Bill, proposed by Councilperson Strasburger, and we thank Councilperson Strasburger for her leadership in creating these amendments. The bill has, as we all know, three sections: parking mandate reform, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and the inclusionary zoning section. Pro Housing Pittsburgh has strongly supported two of those sections since the introduction of the bill: the section removing parking minimums and the section allowing ADUs. Those are very good. They should go through. But we have warned and argued the last 18 months that if inclusionary zoning is made mandatory and insufficiently funded, as originally proposed, it can have the opposite of its intended effect. A mandatory program will limit new homes from being built, constraining the supply of housing, and pushing rents up further. We are pleased to see the amendments address this concern. The amendments allow for more housing to be able to opt in to an affordable housing bonus program. If a housing project opts in and offers 10% of the homes available as affordable to 50% of area median income households, those projects get increased density bonuses, funding to offset the home costs, and an expedited review process. If the incentives for affordable housing are strong enough, home builders will opt into it and add more new-built affordable housing to the housing stock. By making the program voluntary on a project-by-project basis, the amendments prevent the unintended consequences of a mandatory program blocking homes that would otherwise be built. These amendments bring Pittsburgh's policy in line with the approaches of other major cities and allows for win-win scenarios, both more housing and more affordable housing. We encourage city council to adopt these amendments, and having done so, to pass Council Bill 2025 1545, removing parking minimums, allowing ADUs, and creating an affordable housing bonus program citywide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ikana Halmakina. Not seeing Ikana Halmakina, we will move on to Brian Gaudio.
Hello. My name is Brian Gaudio. I'm here as a practitioner who works in housing every day. I wear a number of different hats, primarily as a designer, builder, and modular manufacturer of residential housing, and sometimes as a developer. I am here to speak in favor of the proposed amendment to the zoning bill. The ADU legislation as it is proposed, I think, is going to be great for our city. In fact, next week, we're delivering our first ADU to a community land trust in Durham, North Carolina, who's building ADUs as affordable rentals on their existing single-family portfolio of homes. So I'm really excited to see that tool come here to Pittsburgh in the near future. Additionally, I'm in favor of limiting parking minimums for new development. As was addressed in earlier comments, parking adds significant cost to projects and may not always be needed. Enabling housing providers and communities to decide on a project-by-project basis if parking is needed should enable more housing to be built. And lastly, I'm in favor of the proposed amendment to the inclusionary zoning portion of the bill. I'm encouraged by the bonuses provided for those who choose to add 50% AMI units to their buildings, and this proposal feels like a solid compromise. I encourage council to vote in favor of this proposed amendment. Let's get building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laura Chu Weens.
Hello. My name is Laura Chu Weens. I'm the executive director of Pittsburghers for Public Transit. I'm just to start by saying my members have spoken up for the city's housing package now led by Councilwoman Gross. As Councilwoman Warwick said previously, if this was a democracy, this policy would have long since passed. As a member of the Housing Justice Table, we have spent countless hours in good faith negotiations with Councilwoman Strasburger, weighing changes to the housing amendments to alleviate each and every concern she has raised. She has been the mouthpiece of a few developers in negotiations, Walnut Capital, I'm speaking of you, shifting the goalposts, and every time we agree on a new goal, the next time we meet, Councilwoman Strasburger has moved it still further. Last week, there was a consensus on the housing amendments legislation, and now, here we are, and it seems that she has left the field entirely. Let me be clear, I am impatient for change. This excruciating delay that has been enacted has real consequences on the lives of Pittsburgh residents. But we don't stop because the stakes are too high for us to give up. Every day, there are families whose children are upended from their schools, nurses, and hotel workers and teachers who can't find homes by the jobs they rely on, older adults who cannot afford to age in place within walking distance of grocery stores and transit. Every day that our city fails to pass mandatory inclusionary zoning and make our city more affordable is another day that families must face impossible choices. Without getting into the content of Councilwoman Strasburger's radically new legislation, which I'm sure only a small handful of people have seen, it's in its entirety, it's telling that it's circulated in secret only this week and only among council members who have consistently opposed mandatory inclusion of affordable housing in developments. These are some of the same council members who oppose the passage of fair housing legislation, which is federal civil rights law preventing housing discrimination. These are strange bedfellows. I want to remind everyone that citywide inclusionary zoning requires just two units out of every 20 be made affordable, and that included in the mayor's housing amendments proposal are several bonuses and tax abatements that all translate into real dollars towards ensuring low-income people can live in places where city is experiencing growth. In reading Councilwoman Strasburger's legislations, you get the impression that asking for two out of every 20 is so distasteful, so impossibly generous, that we have to hand over the keys to our city in order to reward developers who should deign to do such a thing. And it's also included mechanisms for developers to buy themselves out of any affordable housing obligation whatsoever and receive these rewards. Is our city truly proposing to give developers our whole pie, our whole pie, while residents still have to beg for crumbs? At a minimum, give us a week to evaluate this legislation and see if we can't negotiate a real solution after months-long negotiations that we have worked towards in the hopes of actually achieving something that means something, real, for renters and low-income people in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Bregan. Our next speaker is Dave Bregan.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Dave Bregan. I'm the executive director of Lawrenceville United, which represents over 950 Lawrenceville residents. My understanding is there's an amendment being offered today by Councilmember Strasburger to make the citywide inclusionary zoning bill voluntary. I'm here to speak against that and for maintaining a mandatory bill. I know people have strong opinions about IZ, but I just want to try again to interject some facts into this discussion. For starters, a mandatory, not a voluntary IZ policy has been repeatedly recommended by a variety of different local experts and reports for a decade. The Affordable Housing Task Force, which was commissioned by this body, the Inclusionary Housing Exploratory Committee, appointed by Mayor Pejudo, the Ethical Development Report by Policy Link and Neighborhood Alliance, the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force, and multiple planning commissions under multiple administrations, all recommended mandatory, not voluntary IZ. The primary reason why a mandatory policy has been recommended is that it has been repeatedly shown in the national literature to be better at achieving the goal of producing more affordable housing. That's the goal. The largest-scale empirical examination of IZ outcomes across the U.S. found that being a mandatory policy was an essential component to creating significantly higher amounts of affordable housing compared to policies that were only voluntary. I also want to remind everyone that we already have a voluntary inclusionary zoning policy citywide in the form of a city tax abatement. It's already working with a number of projects that have voluntarily opted in. As I have shared with this council already, those developers have admitted to me in private that the reason they did so was because their pro forma was improved. The mandatory IZ policy has been discussed for 13 months and has had extremely high levels of engagement. The overwhelming majority of speakers at public hearings representing citizens of every council district, community development organizations, housing agencies, and neighborhood groups have been in favor of the proposed mandatory citywide IZ bill. Of the hundreds of people who testified at these public hearings, I believe, before today, only one developer has actually bothered to testify to Elmar's and module. Love to talk to you guys. I want to mention that many of the cities that Elmar's brought up in their comments today have mandatory inclusionary zoning that, you know, he said we should be more alike. And again, despite how hysterical the critics have been about mandatory IZ, the largest empirical study of IZ looked at a national data set of IZ policies and found that IZ policies didn't affect housing permits or rents. No effect, zero. And these are policies that are way worse than ours, by the way. So to summarize, amending this bill to make it voluntary would run counter to every local policy recommendation on the subject over the past 10 years, national best practice, local evidence, as well as the overwhelming majority of the public, in order to offer additional developer incentives for something that already exists and is working. It's disappointing to be surprised with this amendment after a broad coalition has tried to work in good faith for over a year to reach a fair compromise that takes seriously the concerns of council members.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alisa Grishman.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I am Alisa Grishman. You probably remember me. I am the fat white woman in the blue power wheelchair who always comes up and talks about how we need to focus on affordable, accessible housing. I still want to push that forward, but today I'm here to talk about the fact that we need to make... I want to wholeheartedly say that we need to pass the housing amendments package as it is right now, and that very much includes mandatory inclusionary zoning. You know, it's a fact that in the past, it was okay to put signs outside of houses saying "whites only," and it was so exclusionary, and then we passed civil rights laws saying, "No, mandatory, everyone can live here." Now, we have issues with accessibility and stairs getting into buildings, and it used to be okay to do that and have it be able-bodied people only, and now we have the ADA, which requires that everyone can get in. Inclusionary zoning is a combination of those two things, because the two main groups that are affected in general by needing affordable housing are BIPOC folks, people of color, and disabled folks. And by not having inclusionary zoning mandatory everywhere, it's basically saying that it's optionally okay to discriminate against folks. You know, by making inclusionary zoning optional, we're taking all the teeth out of a bill that is meant to help marginalized people. And do you really want to be on that side of history? So I'm just going to end it right here with my impassioned plea to please pass mandatory inclusionary zoning, keep it as is, further amend it to make it so that it's affordable, accessible housing, but, you know, don't be on the wrong side of history today. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Bean.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good morning, members of council. I'm here today to express my sincere gratitude to Councilmember Strasburger for her diligence and unwavering commitment to finding real, workable solutions to Pittsburgh's housing shortage. The proposed amendments to ordinance 2025 1545 circulated to council members this week for a new voluntary incentivized affordable housing bonus program is exactly the kind of innovative and practical policy our city needs. For too long, we struggled to produce an adequate number of homes for our low-income neighbors. This program moves us away from ineffective mandates and towards a collaborative approach. Policies like this, which encourage home builders to build affordable units, are the only ones with a proven track record of success in cities around the country. They create a win-win scenario, creating new housing options while ensuring that our city remains inclusive and accessible for everyone. Thank you, Councilmember Strasburger, for your leadership and for championing a policy that will make tangible difference in the lives of countless residents, both current and future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Amanda Nietrow. Amanda, we will move on to David Tessitore. Is David Tessitore with us?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Hi. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville, District 2. Currently, I'm in Baltimore, so that's why I'm coming by phone. And I found it very ironic, the big display of the city parks in their historic glory compared to the way they are right now. Of course, I've been talking about that and the need for restructuring. Last week, I said that bad structure impedes the efforts of good people, whereas good structure enables them to excel. And by having six entities with too many cooks spoiling the broth with control of the parks, we really need to get back to the way it was before with a unitary park system. But one of the other issues that I see as an existential threat to the city is the wave of real estate speculation that we can expect to be pushed when we have the Democratic candidate receiving the majority of campaign contributions coming from real estate speculation interests. And I think that this is something that council needs to be aware of. Of course, if council members are like most local elected officials, getting the majority of your own funding from real estate speculation interests, that includes the speculators, the suppliers, the construction unions, and all of those who, regardless of what harm it may cost to the community, are going to make their own money out of it. We still need to address this, especially since the fact that in the 1980s, it was announced by Tom Forrester that the airport was to be the new downtown and the central business district for the region. And we've been moving businesses out of there. The city has been declining since then. Actually, County offered two because we've been pushing into the other counties, merely spreading people out, making it less efficient, and it isn't paying off. People aren't coming here. So really need to be thinking in terms of structural terms of how we can reverse that. One would be to connect with the city, with the airport, with Rapid Rail, so that 15 minutes or less is the time would make it closer than being in the parking lot of the airport itself for most passengers, and that would effectively move the airport into the city. These and other issues of structural reform, when we talk about housing, for example, we need to be taking a holistic approach. While it's good to be talking, getting a little bit more of affordable housing, we have a large amount of...
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Steve Mazza, 2912 Zephyr Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15204, council representative for Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council, carpenters, vice president of Building Trades, vice president of Labor Council, all that stuff. So, you know, I'm in favor of Councilwoman Strasburger's amendments. I think it creates an easier path to get where we want to be. But when I hear about pro formas by the gentleman, does he understand construction? Does he understand that the developers are claiming that it makes it easier what it costs us, taxpayer, the labor forces that are brought in on those projects in the strip and all around the city? Does he understand that? I don't think so. It drives down our area standard wages, loses jobs, tax dollars, and all those things. Excuse me, a little excited. So, look, we need affordable housing. I believe in it. We want to do it. My organization wants to do it every day, but it has to be done at the right cost. We can't continue to lose jobs, lose people from the city, and not retain anybody here. So whenever you're going to build these buildings, we don't need labor brokers, we don't need 1099 workers, we don't need tax fraud, we don't need wage theft, everything that drives down our area standard. We deserve more than what's going on now. So hopefully you guys will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Reggie, Reggie Howes. I live in the 6th District, Danny Lavelle's District. And I came here in June to make you all aware of the fact that I am an 80-year-old competitive athlete representing the Hill District, the City of Pittsburgh, and the State of Pennsylvania. In June, I tried to make you all aware that I was on my way to Des Moines, Iowa, to compete in the 1,500-meter power walking, which is a type of race walking, which is a type of running, and also the 5,000-meter race walking. In 2023, Pittsburgh hosted the National Senior Olympics for the country, and I participated in the 1,500 meters race walking and the 5,000 meter race walking. So in June, I came to seek your moral support for the few senior athletes from the City of Pittsburgh competing on the national arena, in the national stage. So in 2027, there will be, every other year, there's a new national competition for seniors aged 50 years old and up. So I'm in the 80 to 84-year-old age group. And I came to you then, and I said, if everyone lit just one little candle, what a bright world this would be. And it went something like this. If everyone lit just one little candle, what a bright world this would be. So in 2025, last July, I won the silver medal, which I'm holding up here, in the 5,000-meter race walking competition for the whole country. I won the silver medal in the 5,000 meters, and I won the, and that was for second place. For fourth place, I won this ribbon in the 1,500 meters. So before the 2027 national competition arrives, which will be in Tulsa, Oklahoma, I plan to come and at least seek your moral, if not financial, support for that effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Lauren Lynch Novakovic, Knoxville. Celeste Scott, we bring her in the room and we honor her. She is the driving force behind and one of the major reasons that the Housing Justice Table exists as it does, and she also succumbed to the pressures and hostilities and violence of capitalism, poverty, racism, oppression, and their impact on the human right of housing. This settles us into the severity and sensitivity of the matter. Every decision that we do or do not make will impact someone, and it will make or break someone, literally. So we handle it with care and consideration and thoughtfulness, like the duty and responsibility it is. And I'll be emotional every time because that's what we cannot forget, the humanity of it all, the emotion, the toll, and the real people experiencing real life. We have the power, knowledge, tools, resources, and ability to do something, and when we don't, we drag it out, and that is a decision made that has devastating consequences. So are we developers or deniers of basic human dignity? Are we creating inclusion or inequity? Is this a city for all, just not the poor, the working, the disabled, the previously incarcerated, or the previously homeless and unhoused? Then it's not inclusive. A gentleman on the 910 council hearing stated very clearly what we all know: Capital doesn't care. But you all are human, and you are allowing yourselves to be swayed and essentially bought out by capital. So where is your care and compassion for your neighbors? Not everyone has the funds, savings, support, connection, and resources that you do. The time that you take to get to the meetings and start is a luxury. We can't show up to our jobs when we feel like it. The time that you take dragging out this vote and deliberation for months and years or until the next administration, we can't put off securing housing for months and years. Have you ever slept on a couch, a floor, a cold sidewalk, or in a car in the elements? Have you decided not to eat or not to purchase your medication so you can afford your rent? These are real-life lived experiences and choices for your constituents and neighbors throughout the city every day. And while we sit here and come in and out of these halls, you are wasting their time, you are increasing their load, and you are worsening their plight. When you are in the same predicament that many of us find ourselves in, you will wish you moved faster, went deeper, and fought harder. It's simple. What are your values, and are you living them out? Are you committed to serving and listening to the public that elected you, working alongside organizations, advocates, and everyday people? Or are you interested in swaying and standing by the side fixated on your own ambitions or seemingly subconscious classes' beliefs, therefore upholding overdue progress directly harming the rest of us? Every other social issue exists, crime, violence, drug use, and more, can positively be impacted and potentially lessened or solved by affordable, accessible, quality housing, full stop. Past mandatory IZ now make it the standard for the entirety of our city because they already had a choice, and the developers didn't make that choice. You can't have pride as a city of laboring unions and not be committed to accessible, affordable housing. It goes against folks' personal and professional interests. Poverty is man-made. You can't punish us for their greed. You need to stop denying your neighbors' dignity and shelter. Let's work together and get it right.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street in Pittsburgh. That's the high-rise at the top of the Befford. It's 190 apartments. Now, Reggie Howes just spoke. He is the president of our tenants' council. I am very concerned because I went to him more than once and said, what can we do about us citizens, residents, getting beat with hammers and sticks? And when I went to him, he said, I ain't got nothing to do with that. Do you understand? I wouldn't have come down here if we had gotten some help up there. They keep asking me, why did I come down here? Because when I went to someone that's supposed to help us, he said, I ain't got nothing to do with it. We are being beat with hammers and sticks. The one woman got beat, she's dead. She died, but she was already sick. See, Lord, let me say something. Do you know, we have citizens that come to me crying. I'm talking about crying, that they are afraid. When she comes in the building, there's a phone tree. She's in the building, she's in the building, she's in the building. Do you understand? When I came down here, we came down because they took security completely out the building. We had none. And the only thing we came down here is to tell you to please put something there. Even if, they said, well, they're not the police. We didn't ask for them to be the police. We just asked if something happened to us, they could call the police, or if somebody passed out, they could call the police. I'm being threatened in the building where I live. My daughter said, my daughter even said, Mommy, don't go down there because they say you're the troublemaker. I have to speak up for the elders, the ones that are older than me. I am 79 years old and being chased and harassed. When I went to the manager, she says, oh, she don't talk to me like that. But some weeks later, she had the manager by her neck. They heard her say, what did you say to my mother? She said, as long as my mother's living there, I'm coming. And she comes just about every night. My daughter pulls in front of the building. She's saying that, Miss Brown, better keep her mouth shut. My daughter's smaller than me, and she said, oh, Mommy, I felt so bad. I got to walk through, pass her while she's talking about you. She even came when someone called the police on her. She came and she's saying, who's ass she's going to kick. Do you understand what we're going through? And the policeman told me, it's Arbor and Petik. They tell me Petik is her cousin, who said, he's a magistrate, said that she can live there. Do you understand? We're asking for help, that's all. I don't want to be beat up. I don't want to be crippled. That's right. That's right.
Next speaker, please.
The missing child, Sarice Taylor, now known as Special Agent Sunshine. Dear Father, thank you for inviting me into a life filled with meaning and significance. Please help me love and serve others with the gifts you've given me. Let not your heart be troubled. You're never left all alone, no, no. Cast all your cares on me. When you are weak, I'll be strong. Psalm 8912 says, "I will always sing about the Lord's love. I will tell him his loyalty from now on. I will say your love continues forever. Your loyalty goes on and on like the sky." Proverbs, the wisdom for today, is comes from Proverbs 12:8. It says, "A man is praised according to his wisdom, but men with warped minds are despised." Someone has power of attorney over me. Whoever signed off on that without my presence, I curse you to death, in Jesus' name. How dare you receive money for me? I'm capable of working, but my communication is being blocked. Really? I can communicate very well, life to life, person to person, and let people know what's going on in here. It's a thief. You're stealing my money and forcing me to be homeless. You're stealing my money, my mail. I'm not getting my mail, really, from the Roots Organization. Don't you own Roots mostly? That's where my mail goes. Second Avenue Shelter. I'm not getting it. I'm not getting it. Wonder why? God knows exactly where it's going and who is. Psalm 11950 says, it's a promise from God. My comfort, my comfort in my suffering is this: Your promise preserves my life. Only you, Jesus, supply me with all of my needs through your riches and glory in Christ, not the illegal person by fraud that has conservatorship over me, trying to make the courts think I can't take care of myself. I think Jesus is doing a good job. What y'all think? He handling his business. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. He handling his business. But apparently whoever is getting this check from Social Security by fraud, in my name, is not, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers?
I won't be long before you guys. I just wanted to say to Ms. Strasburger that I don't think that you really understand to the capacity that the, where the people, where we live at, how important for this bill to pass. I don't mind walking you around the city, seeing the people who are homeless or the children that are homeless in our community. So we have a big population of homelessness, and I'm not up here to bash you, I'm not up here to, I'm just trying to give you a better understanding of what's going on out in the world. We do need that zoning. It is very important to our homeless population, our mental health population, or people that's coming out of jails... that's coming out of jails population. These developers have been building on our head for a long time, a long time. I live in a Hazelwood community. We've been waiting for development to come for decades. And it's here now. And there's not even a lot of people down on that site from our community that's even working from our community. You know, it's people from everywhere else. And then they hold up different rules such as, you know, if they got a record, they can't be in the union, different rules for the people that live out in our community. So we're not getting a fair share. And we've been there, Ms. Strausberger. We've been there for, like I said, decades waiting for this development to come. And we're not included in our development out in our community. So housing is a big factor. They're getting rebuilt like forty-five, forty-five hundred housing units in our community. How many of our people are really going to be able to afford those houses down there? It's like they're on the other side of the tracks, like in Homestead. When they came and developed in Homestead, they closed down a whole Eighth Avenue. We don't want that to happen in our community, but we see it happening. Gentification is real in our community, and we are not included in things that are happening in our community. And they may say, you know, oh, well, we deal with certain organizations out in your community, but if we came together as a whole, it would make it better for everybody. So I'm just asking for you to reconsider, for y'all to reconsider, open y'all hearts and just think. Like I said, I don't have no problems walking you around my community, just showing you, just teaching you and giving you maybe what you don't understand. You know? So I'm just up here, I don't got nothing bad to say about you, Ms. Strausberger, but I'm just saying, just reconsider. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, I would like to recognize that we've been joined by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I could, I'd like to register a yes vote for the motion to amend the inclusionary zoning bill that I missed. Sorry for my tardiness.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We'll need a motion to reconsider to vote.
Thank you.
A motion to reconsider.
Point of order.
Point of order.
The rules of council state that the order of business at all standing committee meetings of council shall be as follows. Number one, roll call. Number two, council shall by majority vote move to adopt the agenda that was posted twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. Council may by majority vote move to amend the agenda as needed before adoption. Council shall also, which didn't happen, announce the purpose for the amendment of the agenda prior to the vote to amend. Item number three, comments from residents or taxpayers, which was public comment. We cannot reconsider that mode. It violates the rules of council.
May we call the parliamentarian for a decision on this? Yes, please go get her. I thought she was here.
If I see was on line, we should have talked to her.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Amelia Trelo and I am an assistant city solicitor with the Law Department. And I also have Jesse on the phone, who is the deputy solicitor.
Mr. Exelis, so we have. Thank you. So we have a point of order. The question is whether a motion to reconsider is appropriate and allowable at this point in the agenda for the vote that already occurred with desire for a council member to register an i-vote.
The Law Department believes that at this time, we cannot recommend moving forward at this time, and we may need longer to research the answer. Are there any further?
We will proceed with the meeting. Thank you. Just to clarify, by a longer period of time, do you mean within the period of time during this meeting?
For extensive legal research, so memo, most likely, if necessary.
Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Could someone make a motion to reconsider the bill?
We...
We do it all the time. Can we do that? We've done it before on another inclusionary zoning.
At this point in time, the Law Department can't recommend a motion to reconsider until we research further.
I think we disband the Law Department.
Councilperson Charlene.
Does a precedent, because this is the exact same situation that happened, it would have been June or July, does a precedent affect this situation?
How we typically conduct business.
Yeah.
Jesse, I don't know if you'd care to comment on the recent precedent that recently happened in June or July?
Sorry, like recent precedent? I'll say this, like, I would need to have more information for law to even give, to answer to Councilman Brown's question. So I'll be back in the city county building in about twenty minutes because I just came from mediation. I'm happy to kind of discuss it further, but like I think, as you said, Amelia, like right now, there's not sufficient information to be able to give the advice on how to proceed for it at this point.
Thank you. We will proceed with the meeting and seek further legal guidance if Mr. Exelis is available later in the meeting and further beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may?
Point of order.
So I don't understand why we can't proceed and if there's a legal question, let the Law Department take that up. They're not recommending us not to. It's just my opinion.
Can I say something?
Councilperson Kail Smith.
So I would just say that I think that council can make our own rules. We should make, move forward with the vote today and expect an opinion from the Law Department before final vote next week. And if final vote next week, you have something from the Law Department that states otherwise, we can recommit the bill or wait or table.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. So the reason why I think this is slightly different, and I'm certainly willing to be wrong, is previously when we did this, we made a motion to amend the agenda. That motion carried and a bill was added at the beginning of the meeting. In today's meeting, that motion did not pass. It died. We've moved on with the meeting. The issue is not our rules. The issue is the PA Sunshine law, in my personal opinion, that under that law, yes, we can take a motion to amend the agenda and add a bill on, but only under certain conditions. One is if the bill speaks to an emergency or is viewed as de minimis in nature, of which this bill would be neither of those. And therefore, we're under our twenty-four hour window of making public notice. We did not amend the agenda on the public, on the front end, and so to do so now during the meeting does not adhere to the PA Sunshine law, is my understanding of it.
You can make a motion to reconsider.
Jesse may certainly come back with a different ruling, and I'm certainly open to that, but that's my understanding of it in terms of how we're supposed to conduct our business.
If I may, though, the precedent that was set was that public comment started and then we amended the agenda in that, we could have to find the month, but it was either the June or July meeting. We started the meeting, waited for the appropriate members to attend, and then we amended the agenda by roll call, though. So that is our precedent already that we can amend the agenda later in the meeting.
And you can still make a motion to reconsider.
I think I have Councilwoman Wilson and then Councilwoman Warwick.
I was just gonna say something similar, that I was online for that meeting, but my understanding is that it happened after public comment.
Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I'm not, I am certainly no expert on council procedure. I would never claim to be. But I do know that this whole discussion is because there's a desire for, you know, something that has been being negotiated for a year plus, months and months and months and months, and a new amendment that is not what was negotiated with all of the folks who are here today, who have been negotiating in good faith, that is not what was negotiated, is being put on the table to be, I mean, we all know this, right? Let's just be upfront, is being put on the table to be voted through quickly so that we, you know. And I think it's reasonable for us to give our community members just the basic respect of allowing them time to review and understand what this new content is. And I mean, and you know, this will go, I don't know what law is gonna say and whatever, but I just think that that's just sort of, just, you know, we owe it to everybody who's been working so hard, both sides, right? Everybody to have, you know, a week. And we know that once it gets on the agenda, right, it can get voted through. We know where the votes are and anyway. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Yeah, I just want to say people will have a chance to comment on this change. There'll still be public comment next week before final vote. So they'll have that, they'll have that opportunity.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick, I think what we're trying to do here is be transparent. So that is the best we can do in the public setting is actually to present everything so we can all discuss it here at the table.
But this is something that was emailed to us at nine o'clock this morning.
Well, that's what you could say during the discussion.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
The chair, there was a point of order. The chair has to make a decision. This is not just like an open dinner conversation about a point of order.
It's Councilwoman Wilson's turn. I'm giving everyone a point of order. You had a point of order already. Thank you.
I'll finish my comments.
That's not actually how it works.
People complain that we do things behind doors. Here, we're trying to put it on the agenda and talk about it.
Thank you. Okay, we will proceed with the agenda. Thank you. Deferred Papers Bill twenty-two-five, twenty-one oh-nine.
Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article Nine Boards, Authorities, and Commissions, Chapter one seventy-eight E., Registered Community Organizations by temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter one seventy-eight E. until further action of council.
Motion to approve discussion.
Discussion?
Second.
I want to defer to Councilwoman Warwick. I know she wanted to say a few things, right?
Well, I just wanted, I mean, I'm very interested. No, that's fine, that's fine. I'm not actually prepared to discuss this. I am very interested in this bill. So I mean, that would be fine with me to hold it for a week and then, because I think it is, it's an important issue that we need to work through as a council.
So can I?
We have Council President who also should speak. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. So I actually had a meeting with the Planning Department on Monday to discuss this. So eight, nine years now this ordinance has been in effect, and the Planning Commission has been receiving feedback throughout the years on how to strengthen, how to change, how to adopt and make this program better. There was also a survey that was done, I believe in two thousand twenty-three, with all the RCOs, getting their feedback on how to strengthen, better the program. And so the Planning Department is working on an amendment to the original ordinance. It's not ready to come to us today. What I will tell you is some of it is sort of just cleaning up the bill. There's a lot of requirements of RCOs that the vast majority aren't able to follow or don't follow, and so they want to do away with those sort of heavy restrictions. But the biggest changes that I'll sort of brief you all on is the fact that currently development activity meetings are supposed to be managed by the RCOs. In some parts of the city, we have competing RCOs, and so they're supposed to work together to hold the meeting, or the city planning department steps in and conducts that meeting. Also, what happens out of, coming out of development activity meetings is the Planning Department simply provides a report to the Planning Commission staff. They say, this is the meeting, this is what happened. There's no sort of recommendation of how to move forward. It's just simply a report out. The major change that, well, there's sort of two, but the two major changes is the Planning Department would now take on the role of managing all development activity meetings. They would take on that responsibility. It would also help parts of our city where there actually aren't RCOs, and so they don't have development activity meetings for development deals in their parts of the city. So planning would take on that role. The RCOs would then, on the back end, provide a statement of, a statement of position in terms of the proposed development. So they would then say, based on the development activity meetings, based on all our information known, it could go a number of ways. They say, we highly recommend supporting this development. Or they could say, we do not support this development and for here's the reasons why. Or they could say, we're simply indifferent to it, right? But that they would then have power to formally make a recommendation to the actual Planning Commission, which they don't have now. So they would take on that responsibility. The other sort of bigger change within the bill would be that they're raising the standard for what a development activity meeting is required. So right now, as an example, I had to have a development activities meeting for a home in Shinley Farms, terrace, that wanted to change windows. Right, do we, we don't, do we really need development activity meetings for that? No, that should go through the HRC and follow the normal process. So they're raising the standard on what would be required for development activities meeting so that you're not having these little sort of, frivolous is probably not the right word, but that's the word that came to my mind, meetings. So long story short, they are working on an amendment to the ordinance. They want some time to begin briefing RCOs on this so RCOs aren't caught off guard. They're also in the process of, there's about twelve or fourteen that are in the process of having to renew. And so they need to be able to have conversations with them as well. So ideally, I would ask if we'd be willing to hold for about four weeks to allow them time to alert RCOs as to the potential changes and allow them to finalize the amendments to the actual ordinance itself and then bring that forward. And we can obviously then have a fulsome additional conversation. But that's where things stand with this particular bill.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith. I mean, sorry, Councilwoman Warwick, followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Sure, yeah. Oops, sorry. I just want to say, I have not, so I have not looked closely enough at this bill, but one thing that, I do believe that development activities meetings should be run by the city, by city council, city planning. But the other aspect of the RCOs that I am interested in, and I mean, whether this is a conversation with planning or not, is that the issue of communities not feeling that the RCO represents them or that they are part, you know, and this comes up a lot, I think, in, across the city. And I have two RCOs in my district that hold public elections for their board. And I think that is a very, I think that's a great process, right? For if you are going to be the official registered community organization that represents the, that you not be able to just put people on your board as you see fit, right? So that is one thing that I would like to see in RCO reform, is that there be a requirement for some type of elections for board members so that communities, you know, who don't feel represented can run for the board, right? That it gives you the option to like run for the board and do all that. So I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to put that out there because that's sort of my concern, yeah.
So I thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, and thank you, Councilwoman President Lavelle. What I'll say is that city planning has already created this program. They already had their chance to say what they wanted and what they thought should happen, and they gave a select few people across the city of Pittsburgh the opportunity to speak on development in the city of Pittsburgh that affects all sorts of people. And so I'm not supportive of any RCO, to be honest with you. I don't like the idea of RCOs. I think the public should, in general, the city of Pittsburgh, city planning, the planner who gets paid should be out there having meetings with, working alongside the council member who represents that area, and they should have the meetings open to the public for anyone to attend as a city of Pittsburgh, you know, meeting. I'm not, I don't like the idea. And even having someone vote for a board, we know what happens. People get who they want to come in, vote for whoever they want to appoint, and there's still that person who runs that board, who can do whatever. So I actually think if you really want a fair and public process, you give everyone the opportunity and the city runs those meetings. That's what I really think should happen. But I'm not going to be here next year. But I'm not going to be here next year, so I want to make sure whatever you, we do, you're all comfortable with it. I don't mind holding it for two weeks and telling city planning, they have two weeks to give us some responses. And if they don't do it by then, then I'm ready to pass it and vote for it. I think we have the votes for it. People want to make sure that we do some things differently. People are not comfortable with where we are now. And, and I will say, we haven't, we do have a nonprofit issue in the city of Pittsburgh. There are a lot of people, nonprofits running what happens in the city of Pittsburgh, where bike infrastructure goes, where our puses go, where our housing monies and dollars go, where our development goes. And all those, a lot of those organizations are also receiving public dollars, and then they, and then they get involved in politics. And there's a lot of things that have to be said and exposed about what's happening with some of these organizations. I'm going to do that when I have a post-agenda. But I will say that going forward on this RCOs, I think that we need to get a handle on what's happening in our developments in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'll hold, motion to hold for two weeks, but I'm not holding beyond that. Thank you.
There's a motion to hold for four weeks.
Two weeks. I went two weeks.
I didn't make a four.
They already had four weeks.
I was advocating for four.
So, motion to hold for two weeks, and there's a second discussion on the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill be held for two weeks. New Papers, Bill 2290.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Soul Engineering Solutions, LLC, for expert witness services in connection with the litigation matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an amount not to exceed $6,569.60 over one year.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2290, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2291.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Nevada Burrell in an amount not to exceed $3,475 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle from an accident with the city public works vehicle on January 12th, 2022.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2291, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2293.
Resolution further amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27th, 2023, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2024 capital budget that proposed 2024 community development program and the 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by $50,000, increasing bridge upgrades by $10,750, and increasing Swindell Bridge tip by $785,000. $745,750 of which is reimbursable by the Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2293, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill 2306.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Clark Hill to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total costs shall not exceed $133,000 over a three-year period, with two one-year options to extend the contract, and shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion?
Discussion, who called for it? Councilperson Charlin?
Yeah, is someone here to talk about this? Mm-hmm. Hopefully, if we can get back here, but.
Ian Fisher, Deputy Director of Finance Department.
Thank you for being here. So this bond counsel, what, which bonds is, are they counsel to?
These are the general obligation bonds, which would go towards our capital.
Capital budget bonds? So this is a, is this a new firm? We usually work with?
It's this, it's the same firm as the one we use. They won the bid. They had the lowest.
The firm that we've always used?
Yeah, Clark, we put it out to bid this year, and they had the lowest.
And they're different from the Affordable Housing Bond?
Yes.
Counsel, okay. Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, I actually don't know who the, sorry. I don't know who the, the actual counsel is for the affordable one off the top of my head, but I can get you that answer, but we, finance department are strictly in charge of the general obligation bond, which goes towards the capital program.
Okay, I really didn't think it was Clark Hill that was our bond counsel, but I could be wrong.
We also have a bunch of other entities that, like the MAS, which are financial advisors. So there's, they all work in tandem as part of the process, and there's, you know, there's like five or six different entities that help us.
Okay, that's, that's my confusion then, and I appreciate you explaining that to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
I'm Chair. So Ian, we're paying $133,000 for counsel?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of standard protocol. So it'd be over three years, so I think it's like $38,000 the first year, forty, forty.
That was one of my questions. It's over three years?
Yeah.
Okay. And what do they do? They just make sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted when we file for the bond? Or they help us through the process? They help us through the application process?
Yeah, through the whole, the whole, everything. Yeah, so they'll also help draft legislation, they'll work on the official statements. There's actually an opinion that they actually put within the official statements as part of our analysis.
I guess I always felt like we had that in-house, I guess, but I guess we don't.
No, there's, it's a very specialty.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2306, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2307.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreement with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of remittance processing system cost of the remittance processing solution over three years shall not exceed $45,407.26.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2307, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We have no interdepartmental transfers. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
No move.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Bill 2297. Resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with HDR Engineering, Inc., for costs associated with final design of the Swindell Bridge project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $3,618,085.38, an increase of $2,444,157.81, reimbursable at 95%.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's anyone here, just so I can ask about the HDR part. Am I on the wrong bill? Is this the HDR one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm on the wrong page, but I'm on the right bill. Thank you. Could you introduce yourself to the record? No problem.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Scallik, and I'm the acting director for Domi.
So this company, HDR, I don't think any of us kind of, it didn't like really cross our radar, all of the kinds of things they did when we contracted for them to do the Fern Haller Bridge, and certainly this is at a 95% reimbursement. This is like one of those things that the state is supporting. We know that, you know, we got a lot of support to replace the bridge. We were all really happy that the bridge was put back up so quickly. But I just want to acknowledge, this, this is the HDR that we just recently amended approval for contracting for the VA hospital site. And so I just want to kind of confirm that.
That's not, that contract isn't with Domi, but I'm not sure that's with DPW, I think.
Right, so it kind of, as we were researching the VA side, it really came to attention that, just noticing the camera's never on me. So, there we go. Hi, everybody. That the HDR company used social media surveillance and even counterintelligence operations to further its contracts in other cities, which is abhorrent, and we don't want that happening in the city of Pittsburgh. Now, this contract is basically, what's facing us here is basically the project being finished. Am I correct?
That's correct. This money that you're approving today is for final design money. The final design will be for year 2026, 2027. About late of 2027, we're going to put the bridge out to bid, and construction will be about 28, 2028 through 2029.
Okay, so this is for the Swindell Bridge. I'm, this is not a controversial project. There's probably no reason to suspect that HDR is doing anything nefarious to sway public opinion about it. Seems like we have full support on it. And so I'm going to support this today, especially, again, we don't want to hold up a project that's like 95% reimbursed. And God knows, everyone in the public is supportive of us doing more bridge repair and maintenance. So, but I am going to follow up and just make sure that if we need provisions for HDR contracts, that they don't try to do nefarious things to sway public opinion or any of the weird stuff that they do, that we're able to work to put that in their, their contracting into the future. Now, again, now that we're kind of aware of the, the way that they behave in other cities, we don't want them to behave that way here. Fair?
Makes sense, yes.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Hey, I just really wanted to thank you for being attentive towards me for the issues that I called you about last week. Most of them are being fixed, as we know. No, no, Jeff, no, you've done a really good job. I really appreciate your, you know, your, your response to me, your immediate response to me, which I didn't have before the previous director. So, so thanks again, appreciate it, and keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2297, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2298.
Resolution amending Resolution 309 of 2024, which provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Swindell Bridge construction project, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $4,585,000, an increase of $785,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95%, and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $7,000, no increase from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2298, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2299.
Resolution providing for an amended agreement for construction services with Power Contracting Company for the CBD Phase IV project at a cost thereof not to exceed $3,829,410.40, an increase of $7,208.84 from the previously legislated contract authorization.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2299, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill 2300.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance by the city of Pittsburgh of the dedication of 35 parcels to the public right-of-way in the First, Third, Seventh, Eighth, Eleventh, Twelfth, Thirteenth, Twenty-first, and Twenty-second wards of the city of Pittsburgh, council districts one, six, seven, eight, and nine, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2300, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2303.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Tree Pittsburgh to conduct urban forestry programming at Mount Nux who exceed $50,000.
Motion to approve? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2303, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, 2304.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Landforce to conduct urban forestry programming at Mount not to exceed $50,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Just brief discussion. I just want to mention that Landforce started with the MWCDC in Mount Washington, and she's doing a great job with it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all the, Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, second the kind words that the councilwoman had for Landforce. You know, they've done incredible work, and I was actually involved with the workforce development aspect of starting the Emerald View Trail some 16, 17 years ago, and was very, you know, proud to participate in the ribbon cutting for their mill, which is a urban forestry, sustainable business that they're operating right beyond the District Nine border in Wilkinsburg. But again, I think Councilwoman Kail Smith for just mentioning all the good work that Landforce has done, and how they've touched so many parts of the city from, from your district all the way to my district.
That's really odd, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2304, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 2305.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Passack plus MTR for the professional landscape architectural services for Ammon Park, cost not to exceed $327,815.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2305, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Wilson.
Deferred Papers, Bill 2250. Ordinance amending Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, to add restricted personal goods retail to add specific requirements and conditional use application requirements.
Motion to approve discussion? Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. And just wanted to, sorry, motion to approve, and then, so what I have before me is an amendment that I like to, to make to the Bill 22, 2250. This bill is, you know, to regulate, seeks to regulate vape shops, and this, so I'm going to make a motion to amend now, and I can explain after, you know.
See, motion to amend, second.
Discussion? Yeah, thank you. So you'll see that yellow paper in front of you, this amendment does a few things. One, it, you'll see where it, this is not a motion to amend by substitution, so you can see the, the changes. And so in their restricted personal goods retail, it does change, you know, what stakeholders and, and, you know, the city has, other city departments have questioned, which is the floor area space. So we are changing that to a functional character test and taking away the gross floor area that would be calculated, and putting that into a more, you know, more basic, a business whose practical retail activity based on product inventory, display, and marketing, sell products regardless of its name, signage, or business license classification. And then it also adds a line there about products are collectively defined as. You can see how these restricted personal retail goods are defined here in Section 1. Then it also makes a change to the distance, so the separation requirements, there is a distance that's changed. a distance that's changed. So before, previously, there were, it was 1,500 feet from the different entities that were listed for separation, and now that's changed to 1,000. And the other changes are that there are different institutions that are taken away. So, now, it would just be within 1,000 feet of schools, daycares, and another restricted personal goods retail. I just want to thank every, everyone that's been involved in this. This bill seeks to reduce the youth exposure to vape products, limit retail clustering, and promote public health and safety while maintaining commercial fairness. I appreciate all the input that's gone into this, all the sponsors of the bill, Councilman Lavelle, or Council President Lavelle, Councilperson Strasburger, and Sharlin, and looking forward to move this forward, and hopefully everyone can be of support, so that we can send this over to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Kail Smith, followed by Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilwoman Warwick.
I just want to thank Councilman Wilson for putting this in. This is actually something I would like to be added as a sponsor, and so would Councilwoman Gross, I believe, because we were working on something very similar. We were just trying to make sure we got all the wording right, because we wanted to be challenged. But it's, it's an issue, I think, across the city, so I'm, I'm very supportive and want to be added, if you don't mind, and is it okay if Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, sounds great, thanks.
You're okay with it too, right? Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
I, again, I appreciate that council is moving forward with this bill. Some of you are to see what the Planning Commission says. I have to admit, I don't know what a functional character test is. Does anyone else know?
I should have did it before I got married, if I knew.
Right?
Just kidding.
So, the amendment had floor area tests, and now it's called functional character test? Restricted personal goods retail, okay. Is there someone here who knows in the audience?
Interrogatory?
Is there no one from planning? There's no one?
Let me just say something?
Sure.
Okay. So, it's just, it would just be that test of what's defined here. So, it lays it out in terms of the, if the principal activity is the products that are being listed in one, one C. I'm sorry, I do have, I will have to make an amendment here just to change this, but it is, I believe it's one B, that would be one B products are collectively defined as. So, that would be the, the test.
Oh, I see. Yeah, and then your numbering just says one C, and then C, and then C, but we could easily verbally amend that to just say one A, B, and C, right? Okay. And so, okay, so, that section under restricted personal goods retail is basically just what the definition is of those kinds of establishments. That makes sense. Okay, I appreciate it. Do you want to make the verbal amendment to the numbering?
Just let me know when.
Yeah, we have, we have Councilwoman Warwick, and then Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. So, I am extremely supportive of this. I appreciate it coming forward. I wish it had been sooner, because I have so many. I maybe have four vape shops in Hazelwood Business District, within a two-block radius. It is not great. But I also actually would like, if, if, I'd like to add to the, to the separation requirements, public library and public recreation center or senior center. And I don't, I'm not sure why public park or playground has been struck, but I, I would think that would be a good one to keep. I don't know if, interrogatory, I mean, yeah.
Interrogatory.
Yeah, there was pretty extensive work done by some of our staff here on council to make a map, to understand where, where this, you know, where the business could be, and the current, the current location, I'm sorry, the current entities that were defined would essentially ban it. And so, we want to allow it to be in certain places. We want to regulate the location. So, I believe this is the best strategy to have it directly tied to youth exposure, and still allow areas where it could be.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I know in, in my particular district, right, like licensed daycare, I mean, daycares come and go, right, as we all know, they close frequently, and, you know, and I don't feel like we, I mean, again, I haven't seen the maps, but, but I feel like we don't have so many rec. centers and senior centers across the city that, I just know, for example, in Hazelwood, right, like, all the schools have been closed and...
I will say, I'm not opposed to...
I mean, public library at the very least, right, but...
Can we work on that on, on...
You mean before the final vote?
Well, there is no final, this will be sent to, sent to the commission.
Oh, oh, oh.
And so, this, this is something we could, I believe we could change when it comes back. I believe there'll be probably several recommendations.
Okay. I mean, that would be fine with me. I just, that's, I just know for my, for one particular community.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it works, that it works for, for the Second Avenue corridor as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Oh, well, we'd like to amend, motion to amend by, I can't remember what that's called, but just voice amendment, thank you. And this voice amendment, I believe there is several mistakes in terms of ordering, the way we identify the order. So, with Section 1, we have, it should read one A, B, and then, it should just read one A and B instead of one CC. And then for 2, shelf space test, that should be A. And also for 3, sign branding test, that should be labeled as C. For 4, business self-identification test, that should be labeled as A.
Pardon me, Councilman, you said that 3 should be labeled as C. You mean A?
It should be A.
A, sorry. Thank you. And then also, this, I'm not sure if this matters, but there, there is a deleted line 5, functional character test, and that should be A.
Is there a second? Discussion? Seeing none. All, sorry?
Yes. So, to discuss the amendment, and to Councilman Wilson's point, and Councilman Warwick's, it's kind of combined in Section 101A, room and numeral, or like 1, 3, or 4. Any public park or playground? Just a suggestion, public park is hugely more territory than playgrounds. And there may be acres and acres of park, they're really just forest, right? And so, if you were going to strike out that park area, it might satisfy your need to kind of allow it in some parts of the city, whereas keeping the playgrounds where very often it is small children who are, you know, using and enjoying our playgrounds, might satisfy both needs of keeping the vape shops away from active playgrounds, because they are kind of, I think, by definition, different, even in our operations and in our administration and in our code, right? So, because playgrounds are kind of like more insured areas and commissioned and maintained, whereas the parks can be kind of just vastly, you know, just, just kind of open acreage. So, food for thought on, on that one. It seems like the more critical need is to keep the vape shops away from active playgrounds. So, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further discussion on the voice amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of voice amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment passes. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? All those in favor of advancing this bill to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation? I'm sorry.
Believe I need to make that motion. I just made a motion to amend.
Thank you, thank you, yes, okay.
Yeah. Motion to, send to Planning Commission for report and recommendation.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Planning Commission for report and recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be sent to Planning Commission. New Papers, Bill 2294.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh a professional services agreement or agreements with Evolve Environment Architecture to provide services to create historic district design guidelines for the Mexican War Streets and the Manchester Historic Districts, cost not to exceed $37,500.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2294, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2295.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Practical Preservation LLC to provide historic preservation services to complete an updated architectural inventory and national register assessment of civil rights history for the Manchester Historic District, and to revise the national register form, cost not to exceed $40,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Bill 2295, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2296.
Resolution providing for the designation as a historic site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Westinghouse Park located at 320 North Mertland Street in the Point Breeze North Neighborhood, 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to, hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor of holding Bill 2296 for public, cable cast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1971, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Pittsburgh City Code, the naming of Room 902 of the City-County Building to the John R. Sibbit Conference Room.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just brief discussion. I want to thank Council President Lavelle for putting this forward, and for all the speakers that came down for public comment. I did watch the meeting later. But Councilman Lavelle, Council President Lavelle, did you want to say anything?
No, well, sure. There were a number of former city employees, current city employees, even our controller came to the public hearing to speak in favor of it, and everyone just sort of acknowledged how wonderful of a man Mr. Sibbit was, and how much he really truly cared about this building, as well as the pension fund. And many remarked that it was a, it's somewhat saddening to see the fact that he fought so hard for the city pension fund, but never realized its benefit, but that he truly was dedicated to the residents and employees of the City of Pittsburgh. So, this is a fitting honor for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making the nomination.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1971, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Supplemental new paper, Bill 2062, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with the Borough of Munn Hall for the purpose of mutually cooperating in street operations, snow and/or ice services at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can we read both bills together?
Both bills together?
Yeah, please, thank you.
And Bill 2332, resolution amending Resolution 208 of 2025, which authorize an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of, purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories. Equipment support infrastructure and professional services in fiscal year 2025 by increasing the authorized amount by $750 to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works for a new total not to exceed amount of $8,749,319.37.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, this, these two bills together, so the first bill for a, an agility agreement with Munn Hall is something that, geez, we've been working on for over, over a year, right? So, if anyone is familiar with District 5, the 31st Ward is very, very, very far away from the rest of the district. That includes Lincoln Place, Hayes, New Homestead. And as we all recall, last winter, snow removal was a challenge. And it was a particular challenge for these neighborhoods that are farther away. Now, and actually, the neighborhood that isn't mentioned here, where it was the, the worst was New Homestead, which is sort of the farthest one away. So, given, and, and we heard lots about, lots about the fleet, you know, our lack of plows, our lack of trucks. And so, we initiated, I, I initiated together with Director Hornstein, who's welcome to come up as well, if members have questions, to just discuss possibly, and I'm sure that folks who neighbor other boroughs have heard from their residents, you know, a truck comes down the street and then stops. So, the snow gets plowed up to a point, and then it stops when it hits the City of Pittsburgh. And so, the hope here was in, in, in situations where we're having very heavy snowfall, or snow after snow after snow after snow, and our crews are completely at capacity and maxed out, that we could work together with Munn Hall to, who, which is able, more or less, my understanding is to get all their snow up within a matter of two or three hours, to have those streets, you know, have them help us out with those streets that they are already on. Anyway, I think generally that it's a good idea for the City of Pittsburgh to have agility agreements with our neighboring municipalities, with the county, with the state, right? When, you know, when we have all these government assets together, and budgets are tight, resources are tight, that we should be working to help each other wherever we can. However, and this is important to mention, right, our late, our, our workers, right, in particular, our Teamsters, are frustrated, understandably so, at the fact that we do not have enough equipment for them to effectively do their jobs, right? So, showing up to work and not having enough trucks is not fair to our workforce. And so, I had conversations with, with folks at the Teamsters, and while they, and, and I, and I understand that, right? And I understand why they are not happy at this solution, right, of having, you know, just sort of getting help from another local, as opposed to getting more vehicles. So, I made a commitment, not, not, you know, I said, I understand where you are coming from, I still want to help my residents in the 31st Ward, so that they can get their snow up, or at least get the help when we need the help. However, I am also committed to enhancing our fleet, right, like, in making the investment in our fleet. So, this, so the second bill is, is a bill to purchase what I understand to be approximately four new snow plows, right? It's enough money to, so, I'm, I'm trying to do, you know, I'm trying to prob- to do, you know, I'm trying to problem solve sort of i- in the place that, that we are in right now, and the reason that I waived Rule Eight, it's, I was initially going to introduce this a number of weeks back, but of course, the concerns from the Teamsters, I wanted to sit, I wanted to talk with folks, have meetings, sort of give people the respect of, of, you know, making their concerns heard, but, obviously, winter is right around the corner, it takes a long time to order trucks, I don't even know, to be honest, if we're going to be able to get these new trucks in time, right, if this passes, but my hope is that at least by February, that we can at the very least have these new trucks, and I know, of course, we have budget season coming, and there'll be more negotiations, but that would be, that wouldn't, you know, come into effect until next, you know, winter, you know, the end of next year, so, that's where we are with this, I'm happy to have the director come up if there are questions, but that is the thought process behind this, it's not, it's not a perfect solution, but I do think that it is, it, it would be an interesting pilot, just in terms of working with our neighboring municipalities, to help improve services for everyone across the board where there is capacity to do so, so.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to call Director Hornstein to the table, please.
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works.
Yep, so, thanks for being here. Okay, let's start like this, your employee, not your employees, the city employees are Local 1058 represented by the Laborers Union, correct?
I mean, Local 1058 is the...
It's, yeah, it's...
It's part of the...
But our laborer union, our local laborer union, where, who is now, you know, Joe, Joseph LaQuacha is now the, the business agent, he, they represent all city employees, pretty much, all your, all Public Works employees, they represent, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, they do, okay, all right, so they do, and, and the Teamsters, okay, but, so, let me ask you this, is Munn Hall agreeing to do this, if we work something out for them, because they, I, I imagine they're under their own union, and it's hard for me to believe that one union would pit itself against another union, meaning Munn Hall, I know they're not represented by us, the same, they're not under the same agreement that we are in with them, with our city employees, so, I don't know who their union reps are, I don't know what their, but it's not, it's not 1058, it's not our local laborers, so, why, I mean, I mean, are they, did they agree to this, I mean, where were conversations at, I guess, let me ask you that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, first of all, like, let's take a step back and say what the agility agreement is, is actually saying between us and Munn Hall, and again, the conversations we know is in Munn Hall were strictly at the staff level, so we haven't spoken with their union, we would trust them to speak with their union, just like we're speaking with our union reps on the matter, so, first is, it's agreement to provide services in that area as resources allow, one of the provisions is, they would allow us to store salt in their salt dome for our use, and they would load us, that would certainly help us out with the responsiveness of our own folks who are, you know, in the area, they would provide snow and ice removal as their resources would allow to that ward, and we would provide street cleaning services as our resources allow.
Okay, well, that, that is funny to me, okay, because street cleaning services, I can't get street cleaning services, you know that, right, I mean, I get calls every week saying, you, you know, people are very upset in my district because they're moving their vehicles every week for the street cleaning, and then when they don't come, they have to move them back, and they're like, why am I moving my vehicle if we're not doing street cleaning, so, how is it that we can offer that to a suburb when we can't, I feel, fulfill our own obligation?
I think to the, to the councilwoman's point, you know, the union fairly raised those questions to us, right, like, they raised those issues to us, and that was part of her solution here to pilot this, is to make an investment in vehicles and equipment.
A street sweeper?
Specific to this one, no, but I believe there are other actions in the budget that contemplate street sweepers, making them more reliable, I mean, you all heard me here at the table before, speaking about the condition of the fleet and the need to make investment in order to be responsive to it, again, the agreement states as resources allow, so we, the city, have the ability to say, sorry, no, we don't have the resources available to do this, Munn Hall has the same right.
I'm sorry, this seems so messy, I can't, I can't even begin to tell you, I have so many questions surrounding this, but I'm not going to take all the time to answer, to ask all these questions, I would think our union is not for this, did you have feedback? You said you had conversations with them?
Yes, I'm not going to speak on, I'm not going to bother to represent the union's opinions on the matter, they, this is a public forum, and they can come and speak for themselves.
Yeah, okay, so, I will tell you who's not for, is the heads of our unions, the Teamsters, Local 449, and 1058, who represent your drivers, so, let's speak for them, I can speak for them, okay, I'm not going to speak for your individual employees, but I can speak for their union heads, and they gave me the message today, I talked to three people in specific, Joseph LaQuacha, Philip Ameris Jr., and Jason Markovich, and the Teamsters, adamantly against this, adamantly, right, so, I don't care what the, your employees say, I really don't, right, it's, it's their union head who's representing them, they know what's best, Munn Hall, I don't know if they're a union, but they're not our union, okay, we are going down a road which we've gone down before, on the Medical marijuana bill, if you remember, right, where we are entering into a collective bargaining agreement, we're not allowed to do that, they're, they will promptly sue us, they have told me that, that's what they do, that, I wasn't going to drag them down here, this is not that important to them, they, they're, they're like, you know what, it's wrong, they know it's wrong, they can't let it go because it's their job to look after their local union employees, so, I'm like, where, I, I don't even know where this goes, and, and I have so many questions, like, what happens when there's an accident, who's responsible if there's a death, what goes on, what if I want Mount Liberton and Dormont to come in and do my roads, are we going to do that too, I mean, where do we go from there, I, I don't even understand, here's the deal, it's not legal, we're not allowed to jump in on a collective bargaining unit and impose ourselves and cut deals with some suburb, it's, it just doesn't make any sense to me, again, your employees, I don't, I don't care how they feel about it, if, if we can't get the roads paved or, or cleared, that's our fault, that's not, I, I appreciate the councilwoman being creative and thinking outside the box, but not at the expense of our local unions, this is a union town, I think everybody knows that, they take it very seriously, they take their jobs very seriously, if you had employees that wanted to do work overtime because they wanted to build a bigger house, you got Munn Hall now coming in and taking their job, that's the way they look at it, they are very protective of their jobs, and, and that's the main thing for them, and, again, I didn't want to drag them down here, but I am speaking for them, okay, and, and I said to them, I said, I think we have five common sense folks on this council where I'm not worried about it, but obviously, we'll have until Tuesday, if, we'll all be hearing from them if, for chance, it were to pass today, okay, which I don't expect, I hope not, I really do, it causes a great big mess that nobody wants to be a part of, I would say, and a lawsuit, I mean, a lawsuit will surely follow if we were to go through with this next Tuesday, so, so, so we'll, we'll see how the vote goes, I guess, but again, Munn Hall is not in the collective bargaining unit, we have an agreement, the union has an agreement with the City of Pittsburgh that we are to plow, pave, you know, we're, we're to do that work, your Public Works employees who are under that union are to do that work, for us to jump in there and say, oh, we're going to bring people in from somewhere else, I mean, who does not see the legalities in this, number one, and number two, just the, the disrespect for our unions, okay, which I'm getting used to at this table, honestly, in the next, over the past year, so, it's disrespectful to all of those unions that represent mostly 449 and the laborers, that's who it's going to impact, it's the Teamsters and the laborers that work for you, and Teamsters, I guess, do you have Teamsters under you?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, they adamantly oppose it, adamantly, they told me to say that word, okay, so, just so members know, they adamantly oppose it, our union heads adamantly oppose this because it's illegal, number one, number two, you're taking jobs from city workers, or opportunities for them to earn overtime pay, are, are we short employees? Why are we even considering this, let me just ask you that in your opinion?
In, in my opinion, this particular area of the city and other areas of the city will always be a challenge for snow and ice removal.
Like mine, right, we can agree to that.
No, I'd actually say this one is just out there.
Okay, so, what if I want Dormont to come in and do my neighborhood, you okay with that too?
I think that's a topic of discussion.
Exactly, see how messy this thing could get, really, you know, I know, you know, I get a thousand calls every winter, I get slammed, slammed, because of my hills, right, if, I won't do it, I won't call others in because it's against our unions, right, I mean, and it's illegal, but two things, you, you have to go by a contract, they're under contract, city employees are under con, the City of Pittsburgh is under contract, okay, with the unions, that we, they are to do this, we can't just decide, they have to be at the table, number one, they have to be at the table, and, and I'd like to ask, who will be presenting this, is, is this something that the, the administration would then put forward, or is this something that you would put forward, interlocutory, please?
Yep, so, as far as, so, my understanding is that first, we need this in order to even have an agreement, I mean, we've been talking about an agreement, right, but in order to actually engage on an agreement, and also for Munn Hall to go, right, we have to, there's no point in Munn Hall going and getting approval to do this agreement until we have done that, so that's what this is, is my understanding, right?
Yeah, you're looking for agreement from this council today to proceed into this...
To allow us to proceed into an agreement, yes.
To allow us to proceed into an agreement, okay, and did you talk to our, our local unions about this?
Yes, so, as I said initially, right, I, I, I have spoken specifically with the Teamsters, I do understand that they are uncomfortable with this because of the fact that their position, as I, and again, I don't speak for them, but per our conversations, their position is, the City of Pittsburgh has been failing their workers by not providing us, by, by not providing them the equipment they need to effectively do their jobs, and that has been something that has been going on for a very long time.
I'll be glad to use their vehicles, I will tell you that, for our employees, I will be glad that if they want to give us their vehicles and we store salt for them, I'll be glad to do that, that's not a problem.
And so, that is why I have the second bill on the table, which is a baby step, I will say, right, it's not, certainly not a solution, but is a, you know, to show that I understand the situation, but that I'm also, as someone who is trying to govern for my district and solve a problem for my district, you know, trying to do both things at the same time.
Yeah, and, and I respect that, I do.
Because right now, we don't have the vehicles, so, right now, at least this past winter, right, my understanding is Division Three, that's my, that's my division that, or not my, that is the division that covers all of my district in addition to, so that's, you know, Greenfield, Hazelwood, 31st Ward, Squirrel Hill, also Point Breeze, also Oakland, also Shady Side, perhaps some of, I'm not positive.
And the Hill.
And the Hill, it is a massive, massive geographical area, and in order to get to the 31st Ward that is over the, the Glenwood Bridge, it, it's just an enormous amount of time, right?
Okay, well, you'll have your opportunity.
To get over there, so I'm just, I'm just so...
I, I understand, I, I know, I just, I want to get my points across, and then, you know, you'll have your opportunity to speak, obviously, but, and, and again, and I appreciate that, and you know what, for the vehicles, I'm all for it, I don't care where you get that money from, I'm all for that, you have my vote on that, I'm adamantly against this, as are the unions.
I, I understand.
It's just not something that we should, not a road we should be going down, I don't know, if, if a lawsuit entails, who's responsible for that now, are we going to pay for attorneys? Are we going to have to fight them in court?
I do want to say that we have agility agreements, right, with other municipalities, right, we have agility agreements in public safety, I'm not sure, I know that Domi has agility agreements with other municipalities, so this is not out of the ordinary that we would have an agility agreement with a neighboring municipality or another government body, whether that be the county or otherwise.
But give me a, give me an, give me an example of an agility agreement that we have with a suburb.
All of the police co-response ones qualify, you know, we do have those with the county, we do have it with PennDOT.
Well, I know PennDOT like paves, or, or clears some of our roads, that...
Same with the county and vice versa, right, like, we do some county roads, county does some city roads, it's a practical matter of just like, you know, and to the constructive conversation that we have with Munn Hall, there are just certain streets that like, they're, they are literally right there, by virtue of the way the boundary, by virtue of the way the boundary is...
I'm all about common sense, I really am, believe me.
I think everybody should be.
Absolutely, I do too, but therefore, let's bring Dormont, Mount Liberton into my district, okay, let's do that too, where would you, what would you say to that?
But I would argue that would be a, a good conversation to have, but I can't, I'm not going to have...
Not for me, I agree with you, but not for me, but, so, it's, first of all, it's not legal for us to go in and break up a collective bargaining unit, they have a contract, this is a contract we're injecting ourselves into between these unions, the unions oppose it, maybe any other utility or agility agreement we have, maybe the union sign off on it, I don't know, but I would tell you, these particular unions that affect these employees are adamantly against it, period, that's what they told me, they told me to pre-stress that, they didn't want to take the time to come down and even argue with it, I said, you know, maybe you should, no, I said, don't even bother, I said, I, I feel like, you know, I, I hope to lay it out where this council does the right thing and doesn't interfere and with a, with a, an agreement, legal document, that we have no business interfering with, so, so, and, and again, back to the street sweeper, honestly, I, I will tell you this, I, I'd rather have no street sweeper than people call me every week saying, why didn't I move in my car every week, and the street sweeper's coming once a month, and, and then to find out, oh, that's kind of what we're going to trade with, with Munn Hall, I'm like, where, where are our street sweepers, I don't even know, I mean, what, what else were we going to do, store salt and trade cleaner streets, is that, is that what the agreement entailed, or, what else did it entail, what, what was the agreement, what's the agreement you're talking to Munn Hall about?
Those two things.
Those two things, so, we're going to clean their streets, when I can't, I have to go to my residents now and say, oh, guess what, they're going to read this, they're going to read this, I'm sure our fine reporters in the room are going to report on it, and they're going to see, oh, we're going to clean the Munn Hall streets, I want them to report that, right, because they're going to be up in arms in my district, honestly, Director, they're going to be up in arms, because we, they're so angry with the city because they have to move their car, again, I keep reiterating, but, and then to say, we're swapping with Munn Hall to, to do just that piece over there, that is just like, no good, so, anyway, I'm adamantly against it, the unions are, you know, I'll wait till second round, but that's, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, any further first round? Councilwoman Gross, Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you, so, I've tried to do something similar before, and it failed, in that I sponsored a resolution in, with Councilwoman Coghill, in 2020, authorizing the administration to enter into a contract, and it failed at this council because it's not supposed to happen that way, so, because in the Home rule Charter, it's a clear mayoral administration duty, that weren't, the call at the time, which, you know, I disagreed with, was that council members aren't supposed to sponsor, I think, Councilwoman Strasburg called for the legal opinion, that council, that council members aren't supposed to sponsor this kind of resolution, I don't always agree with the legal opinions, but there are things that council does do when we want to call on the administration to do a thing, and instead of jumping to authorizing the contract, we, where the resolution is calling on the administration, you know, calling specifically on DPW, calling specifically on whatever kind of the ELA, calling on them to make a recommendation to council to do a thing, you can put a deadline on it, right, and so that when they come back, it kind of sets up them, it makes them do their homework, which is, I think, what the goal is here, because I think the concept is good, but moving forward this way, and God knows, just to concur with every other council member's, right, we need better solutions for street cleaning, I've got clogged catch basins, I mean, we've, people are out there raking themselves, it's, you know, we get flooding, we get bad effects, and so we all, I think, want to enter into this, and this is a really great concept, looks like to me, I don't know the specifics, and I certainly don't know how the joint bargaining group is approaching it, but maybe to back off of, from the hostile footing so that the, the discussions go more productively, one... Um, one option, which is what I've had to do in the past, what other members have had to do in the past, right? It's just that council can pass a resolution calling on the administration to explore this option, which is not giving them the authority, which I actually also always hate doing, right? Of kind of just giving carte blanche, carte blanche to negotiate a contract. Everybody knows I hate that, right? And that I don't think council has to do that. Um, so, they can explore the options, bring it back to us, and then we can, we can have a, a debate on the substance. Um, so that's, that's a, that's a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Yes, uh, so, you know, I think we're all seeing the same problems, um, and I appreciate the creativity of the solution, um, but this is not the solution that I, I can support here. Taking our work away and moving it to, um, a different union is, it, 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 in some ways, it's like the Parking Authority, um, giving up residency. It's, it's, we have, we have the ability to solve the solution ourselves. We have, you know, more than enough employees, uh, God knows, we have more than enough employees. Uh, we need to buy, buy vehicles. I appreciate, I believe that you, you're paying for the vehicles from the liquid fuels tax, uh, which I think is something new that we've just recently uncovered, that we've been able to do, that we've had the ability to do for quite some time. Um, so, we should, you know, we should be buying more vehicles, just, you know, similar to my fourth division needing, um, you know, needing equipment. We, we have an equipment problem, this isn't the solution here. Um, and I can't ever support anything that, uh, stands in the way of, you know, allowing our, uh, folks in labor, especially laborers, and, you know, as, as you all know, I'm the son of a Teamster, um, taking away, yeah, yeah, right. But taking that away for, from, from our, our working folks, I, I just, I can't possibly support, um, that, you know, intention today. That's, that's too important to, um, to ignore, so. Um, with, with that, I, you know, I like the creativity of, of the solution. I like that we're able to find a new pocket of money that we can use for vehicles, um, but unfortunately, there's, this is not the solution I can support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, I know this has been explored for some time now, and I did get a call, I think it was like a few, once ago, from, uh, union leaders, or union leader, uh, Teamsters. And, uh, I know this bill was reiterated and, uh, put on the agenda today, so only had like a day, and I haven't touched base with that, um, uh, with the union on this yet. And at the time of the call, they were completely against it, so I feel like it's only fair that I follow up on that phone call. Um, so I'm going to vote no today on this bill as well. Uh, I also think it's, um, very unfortunate we keep on going down the road of, uh, talking about how we want to, that we just admit that we can't offer services to the public, and then we, that we then, um, don't think about how other, uh, you know, larger projects in the city could actually benefit us because of tax dollars, whether that's, you know, real estate tax dollars or income tax, and we just continually get on this road of, I mean, why as well just give, I mean, what part of the city is this? Lincoln Place? We're just going to give Lincoln Place to Munn Hall? Because we can't, we just going to start dissolving as a city because we, uh, just don't want to figure out strategies to, eh, bring in revenue? I feel like we all need a class in how we bring in revenue and that we support our, our residents. Like, I, I, I don't understand what's going on here sometimes. So, uh, there are a lot of people in need in this, in this city, and I know we're just talking about street paving here, or street, uh, plowing, plowing the streets. Um, eh, but, I mean, this just speaks to a larger issue of just services that we are trying to provide the public, and we see the, the new budget, and it's, I don't know, I guess I'll hold my comments on that. I'd be here forever. But, um, yeah, we continually get on this road, just like we did. Yeah, I mean, I think it was a good comment about the Parking Authority, uh, which they did get a new contract, twenty-six dollars an hour, so now, you know, people making twenty-six dollars an hour, uh, can live outside the city and we don't get that tax revenue, so. I know this, we didn't have a, everyone was for that here, but just the, the concept of continually give up on Pittsburgh is just unacceptable to me. Uh, I think there is a solution to, to fund, uh, areas of the city that, you know, are part of Pittsburgh, and, uh, I do not know how I would tell through, through, like, four different neighborhoods in my, in my district that street sweeping will now be going to Munn Hall. I don't know the level of conversation that people understand that I have with street sweeping to certain neighborhoods in District One, and how they would just be so outraged that we would negotiate to do street sweeping outside of the city. It's a non-starter. Uh, we have to have street sweepers at work. I have two in District One that, uh, Division One that just don't work. I mean, I think you're aware of, right? So, uh, it's been a longstanding problem, and I know we're, I was happy that the council here supported legislation to understand the needs of the fleet. Um, I, I don't understand why these two bills are, are joined together. If, if we are providing trucks that they need, then why do we need this agreement then? And then if we do have the funds to, if we can just magically find funds to get trucks, why weren't we doing it already? So, a lot of questions, and I appreciate, um, you know, the conversation, but I'm going to vote no today. I mean, maybe I could be a yes, but I just have to literally follow up with the union to understand, uh, what the position is, because even last year, I think when this made the news, I had workers, uh, from DPW reach out, not even union reps, and they said, this is not a good road to go down, better watch out. So, I'd like to follow up on those conversations.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kayle Smith.
Thank you, and I just, um, I have not spoken to the unions, but they seem to call the men in council. But I'll say that, um, I do want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Warwick has come up with a solution, and although my husband's a Teamster as well, and so, I'm very supportive of the unions, and this to me is not the way to go, but the fact that you found eight million dollars to buy equipment, I mean, because you're trying to find a solution for your residents that quick, what'd you say?
Seven hundred fifty thousand.
Seven hundred fifty thousand, I'm sorry, I thought I saw, I thought I saw eight million. But the fact that you found enough to buy equipment that quick, I'm sorry. I did see, I did see, I did see eight million on here, but it's coming out of that, I apologize. Um, but anyway, the fact that you found that money that quick because you're trying to find a solution was, is amazing. And, so I think that now we could, that you're showing us that we can do that, and we should be doing that now anyway, because the answer is not to allow someone else to come in and do our work. The answer is to make sure that we can do the work that we pay you to do and that your employees do. And so I'm just curious, how many, um, do you know offhand, how many pieces of equipment for snow removal do you have per zone, per di, uh, per division?
I mean, it varies, it's not, you know, the, each division has a different amount of road miles, so we size the divisions and the pieces of equipment based on the, their area of responsibility, and also the, you know, available pieces of equipment we have. I don't have the snowboard yet, because that usually doesn't come in November, but my understanding is with, uh, well, last year it was one oh four, but this year it's going to be less, um, because we've decommissioned vehicles that should not be on the road because they're unsafe to drive. It's going to be in the neighborhood of a hundred, hundred and one.
We've had a lot of great DPW drivers in, you know, the fifth division. I mean, Eric Paulus, John McClory, those, the guys that were, who, John McClory, the guys that worked out of those divisions know this, like, the back of their hands. And so if they have the equipment, they can get it done. And so, I think that it's incumbent upon us, if she managed to find this much money for equipment for her small section of the city, then we should be able to find more money to get those, that equipment ordered. My concern is that it doesn't come in in time for this winter. And so, I'm sorry, do you want to say something?
Yeah, it's not just, the, the, the vehicles are not just for my.
But I'm just saying.
I just wanted to clarify that, they're just in general.
Yeah, but you came up with it that quickly. But you came up with it that quickly, is what I'm saying. And so what I'm saying is that we need to find the money in the budget to do, to buy the equipment that we need. I mean, this is a priority. These are the things we're responsible for, basic services to our residents. We're not responsible for some of the other things that we're funding. Unfortunately, you know, DHS is responsible for funding some of the things we're funding, you know, the federal government's responsible for funding some of the things we're funding. And unfortunately, we're funding all these things and duplicating the things they're doing, and then we're unable, and we're giving our residents poor excuses for the things that we are responsible to do. We need to stop making excuses and make it a priority to start helping you to deliver the services that we, that our residents expect and that they pay taxes for. And I think a lot of times, you know, we look at the budget and we want to, you know, add more to it and cut this, but our, our, I think outside of those priorities, everything else is a luxury. And so we should really sit down and focus on what the core functions are of this government, and making sure we're funding those things before a dime goes out of those, out of our pockets for anything else, you know, out of the budget for anything else. And so, I, but I want to, I want to make sure I mention all that, but I, um, I also think, like, a lot of times, we talk about, you know, merging services and using services, and, and, and we're doing that with the fire in, in different places, and it works well in places we are doing it, as far as I know. But I really think the problem is, instead of piecemealing together all these things that we're trying to do, is we really do need a conversation about the city-county merger, because that's what, basically what we're doing, piece by piece, we're doing it. So instead of doing it like this, we need to at least have a conversation, understand what does that even look like? What does, I mean, maybe it's an awful idea and we don't really want to do it, but nobody knows, because nobody ha, actually has the conversation. And so I just think that we need to, and, and I think the residents, if they knew facts, they may have, have a, a strong opinion about it, but I, even they don't have the details, so they can't make a, you know, a determination, because nobody really has the facts. And back when I was council president, I remember, we put together a team to explore that, like, what does that look like? You know, it, we know schools are an issue in, for some places. And, yeah, yeah, and so there's, there's, there's some, you know, legacy costs and different things. We know that there's some issues, but we're not even breaking down, like, what does that even look like? So, I, I just think, and personally, you know, I, I worry about it because I always say, if, you know, we're sharing police officers, and there's a call in Esplan, and there's a call in Mount Lebanon, they're going to Mount Lebanon. You know, and, and, you know, it's a bigger area, wealthier area, more affluent area, and, um, you know, but I love the people in Esplan. You know, I want to make sure they're getting their, their service as well. So, for me, I, to me, it's a bigger, it's a broader conversation, but I, I can't, I can't vote for this today, and I want to vote for it because I think you worked so hard on it, and I know you want a solution for your residents, and I applaud you for trying to do something for your residents, um, so significant and so serious. But I can't, for me, I won't, I won't go against, you know, the, well, I don't think we can. I think contractually, we can't. And so I think for those reasons, I can't today. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Uh, thank you, and I'm, first I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Warwick for the time yesterday on the phone, um, you know, to discuss, you know, this issue, and I think, like, most people around the table, you know, philosophically, um, you know, I am in, you know, support, you know, of finding solutions to serve the public, um, and, and provide the services that our citizens, you know, expect, you know, and, and I, I mentioned I hadn't heard, you know, from the unions, you know, when we had spoke, but subsequently, you know, I have, and, you know, it has raised some concerns that I do understand, at least it's my understanding that the steelworkers represent the, uh, in Munn Hall. And, um, and I'm, I'm a, a member of the Steelworkers Union through my time as the state director of the Blue Green Alliance, I'm proud to be a card-carrying member of that union, so I would like to reach out to them as well, and, um, and find out, you know, what conversations, you know, had to that point, and I think it would be helpful to get some clarity from law, like, in the situation that there is, you know, some legal action, you know, taken, um, you know, as well, you know, I'm definitely in support of, um, making the acquisition, you know, of these trucks, and I applaud, you know, the, the innovative and, and creative work that, that went, you know, around this, um, but, you know, I do, you know, have concerns, you know, wouldn't be ready, you know, to support this, you know, today, you know, even though in, in our conversation yesterday, I did, you know, express, um, you know, philosophical support for the effort, you know, but we did, you know, in, in our conversation, you know, talk about, you know, the possibility of hearing, you know, from our, our labor unions, and I think, um, it is also important to note the, the street sweeper, um, issue, because that is a huge issue, um, in my district. I, I get numerous calls from my Point Breeze, um, and Region Square, uh, residents, you know, particularly the folks on East End Avenue, um, on, on, on a monthly basis about the shortage of, uh, the street sweeping equipment that we had. I know that would not be a popular, uh, thing, uh, in Point Breeze and Region Square, um, because I, I think it's been a couple months since some of those areas have gotten swept, um, you know, just because of the shortage of vehicles, and I think in, 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 um, in the second division, I think it's a shortage of a driver. Um, and that's not to take away from the fantastic, you know, work that they do, you know, kudos to you and kudos to Ed Williams. Um, you know, and actually, I would like to talk to them, because I work very closely with the second division. Um, you know, we do a tremendous amount of work on a weekly basis, and they do so much to make me look good, it's almost like the second division is a part of the district not staff. Um, so I would also like, like to hear from them, I would never want to do anything that they would feel undercut just based upon the relationship, um, you know, that, that, that we have and the work that we do, um, and just how quickly they respond to constituent concerns, um, throughout the second division. Um, so, you know, so, I, you know, I'm not a, a yes today, but I would like to, you know, continue to explore the possibility of how do we provide services, you know, to our residents, and I definitely applaud the work, um, that, that Councilwoman Warwick has done. I want to continue to work with her, and I would like to even see if we can have a joint conversation, particularly with the steelworkers, just because of my deep relationships with the Steelworkers Union, to find out how those relationships have gone with the Munn Hall workforce as well. But I thank you, and I really thank Councilwoman Warwick for, um, the incredible work that she's done on this.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Um, I did speak with Councilwoman Warwick about it. I told her I would be willing to support it, and so I will. I think part of what we're doing is looking at this from the perspective of somehow our workers are going to be supplanted versus they're going to have additional resources brought to the table. Um, and I also think that, just practically speaking, the idea of you do our snow, we'll do your street cleaning, doesn't really work that neatly, just because of a labor management perspective and different crews doing different things. So, all that would have to be figured out. Um, the unions is a legitimate concern, which all of that would also have to be figured out, but the action today is instructing the mayor to try to figure it out. And I'm not against the mayor trying to have a conversation about how could this potentially work. It's not a guarantee, but it's certainly worth a, a conversation.
Thank you. And any further, I think we've exhausted first round, second round, Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yeah, so I did, I just wanted to highlight, um, the, so, so we're looking this, this winter, and again, neither of these bills is a solution to the snow issue, right? I mean, I, I, snow was terrible for me last, last winter. I mean, the number of calls, you know, I, some of that may have been election-related, but I think a lot of it was actual. Um, but if we have a hundred or less, or a few, you know, trucks, that's like one point one truck per neighborhood. And I hear a lot, obviously because I am adjacent to Munn Hall, right? So I have lots of residents with family in Munn Hall, and, but, you know, and I hear over and over and over again how great the, how quickly the snow gets up in Munn Hall, and just through these conversations, I don't want to, I don't, my understanding is that there, Munn Hall has maybe nine or ten trucks, I can't remember exactly, um, which really would be the equivalent of us having nine or ten trucks just for Greenfield. And if we had nine or ten trucks in Greenfield, we would have the snow up in two hours as well. So I do want to underscore that this is not about our workers. And people were really awful to our workers last winter, if you recall. Um, so, anyway, um, again, I get it. I get that the unions don't support this. I'm, I'm trying to do something that helps our workers and also helps our residents. I understand that this is not necessarily going to be successful. I do hope that, that we purchase the vehicles, at the very least. But, um, on a broader scale, and this is more of like a big picture, um, topic, that we hear about a lot, we tend to hear about it more in public safety. We tend to hear about it more in public safety. Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh, is the tax base for the entire region. This county runs on our tax dollars. It runs on the money that our residents put into the larger pot. And so the idea, so our tax dollars go to every municipality in the re, in, in, in the county and in the, I mean, and even in the state, even in southwestern Pennsylvania, right? We are funding half of the state of Pennsylvania, more or less. And so it isn't crazy to expect when, whether it be county resources or resources in neighboring municipalities, when those resources are not being used, whether that be police resources or DPW or, you know, trucks and whatnot, when those resources are sitting idle because they've already done the work that they needed to do, that Pittsburgh have access to those resources is not crazy. It's an important conversation that I think we should have and we should insist on with, you know, larger bodies of government. And so, so whether that is getting our streets plowed when it's snowing and we have so many more miles of road, or whether it's the NFL draft and we're hosting this massive event that is going to energize the entire region, that that somehow falls on our backs as a city? Or whether it is East Carson Street on Friday and Saturday night during the summertime, when everybody wants to come out and have a good time in the city of Pittsburgh? That we somehow as the city, our city residents bear the burden? That we should somehow hire umpteen more officers just to deal with those, those kind of, you know, unique situations that happen from time to time in our city because we are the city? That doesn't seem fair to me. So this is really just a broader, a broader topic. I just want to put it out there on the table because it's something I say in the press over and over again. I rarely get quoted on it. But I think that it's something that the residents of Pittsburgh should be aware of and should be demanding that, you know, we are the economic engine of this city. And so when we need help as the city of Pittsburgh, because times are tight, right? Because belts are being tightened, that we should expect that from our neighbors to help, to help us out in the same way that we help them out by the very fact of the matter that we are, our tax dollars are what are funding the region overall. Anyway, I, I will leave it at this, you know, I, I was hoping for my residents that this would be a little bit of relief in the 31st Ward. We'll see how, you know, if I, you know, I can always go back and say, hey, I tried. Thanks.
Councilman Cogell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say to you, Director, I don't mean to aim my frustrations at Public Works. I really don't. All in all, you do a great job with the resources you have. I, I really truly mean that. Very happy with my two, you know, Jeff Cook and John McClory do a great job. They respond to me. You are very responsive to me. So I don't want in any way you to take it personal, personally, okay? It has nothing to do with that. And Councilwoman Warwick, you know, I, I just wish this, okay? I understand what you're trying to do. I really do. And, and again, it's creative. I, I like that about it. But, you know, we had spoken a week ago about this or so. And, you know, we, I thought we were going to sit down and talk about this rather than, I was surprised to see it on the agenda yesterday and then I was surprised to see it was relaided. So, and then that forced me, and as Councilwoman Teresa Kill Smith points out, that they just called the men the union guys. It's not like that. It really isn't. But I will tell you this, I called them, right? Because I was, I was like surprised that, like this is on the agenda, we're relaying it. So, um, you know, so I actually reached out to them, you know, I wanted them to know. They don't follow, they don't follow our agenda. They don't, they don't, they might catch it in the newspaper and I'm trying to nix it before it becomes a real issue, before they file suit, before they, you know, becomes a, a serious issue. And I knew, I know that this, first of all, it's not legal and we just shouldn't be jumping in on, you know, collective bargaining agreements. We just don't have that authority to do it. It's not illegal, you're saying?
No.
Okay, well, we'll let the lawsuit or the courts decide that, I guess, if it comes to that. I hope it doesn't, but, you know, I know one thing, when, when somebody has a legal agreement to do something, document, and we try to, as a city, upend that. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I, I won't comment any further on that, but, um, how many, let me ask you this, Director. How many street sweepers do we have?
Uh, 10.
10. How many are functioning?
My last understanding was four.
Four.
Correct.
Four. So I'm sure you understand how, when my district reads this and they're moving their cars every week and having, you know, how the frustration it's going to cause for them, right? So, so that to me was just, it was just, it was comical almost, it really was. So again, Councilwoman, I appreciate your efforts. I really do. I hope, I wish we could talk about this further. When things like this come up in the future, I wish you and I would just have a conversation because I guess I feel like I talk to them and you don't.
With, with all due respect, Councilman, I spoke with the Teamsters on Friday to let them know this was coming to the table. I don't actually need to talk to you in order to talk to our union leaders. They have my number.
I didn't say you did. You know, I'm not the only one here. Many, most of us have good relationships with our building trades. Most of us.
If we could, this is not an interrogatory.
Okay, sorry. Oh, for what's on my, okay, good. So I, I, I get it. I'm glad you talked to the Teamsters and I know they were frustrated. I know you, they told you, you know, they don't want you to do that. And I wish you would take their advice. I mean, that's kind of what I do and that's kind of what I feel like, you know, other members do, is take their advice and know that they look, they see this as a threat to their jobs. That's what they see this, okay? And let's say if it works, let's just pretend like it works beautifully. And Lincoln Place is the cleanest streets this side of the Mississippi, right? Then we're talking about dissolving it because I, I would say that I would, I wouldn't do it because I don't want to break the agreement that the unions have. But what's stopping any other council member from doing that? And then you're now dissolving jobs right there, okay? If Councilwoman Wilson says, oh, you know, I want Bellevue to take care of Brighton Heights. You know, then, then what? Are we just going to eliminate our jobs? I mean, you understand what they see. You understand they're protecting their jobs. That's the only thing that's important to them. It really is. As far as the equipment goes, that's on us.
Indeed.
And one other thing, Director, do we have enough personnel? If we had however many vehicles, as many as you need it, do we have the personnel to put people in those vehicles to, to clear all our roads?
I mean, how many vehicles are we, are you committing to, Councilman?
Well, here's what I would say. If Munn Hall is willing to lend us their vehicles for our drivers, I don't think that would be a problem. If you want to really be creative, and then we'll store their salt. I mean, this way, we're not eliminating jobs or infringing on other people's unions and jobs. So, you know, if, if, if we want to be creative, let's be creative. But it's not going to be replacing jobs in the city, our city employees. So, again, if they want to offer us trucks to use because we don't have enough, we have the personnel. The Director said we have the personnel.
Well.
We just don't have the trucks.
Let's be, let's be crystal clear about something. In my survey of surrounding municipalities, it doesn't, not all-inclusive of the, you know, 113 in the county or whatever, but every resource that I've talked to, including the state, including the county, including other surrounding municipalities, they all commit four times the resources that the city does to snow and ice removal, okay? So that's people, that's trucks, okay? So when residents, when you're joining residents, say, I don't understand why Dormont is clean and the city isn't, well, your answer to the question is they commit four times the resources per lane mile that the city does. The real question, I would think, council is having the power of the purse is, can we reasonably find a plan that we can commit the same amount of resources in the city? Personally, professionally, I, I don't see how that could be a realistic option on any type of time horizon.
You really want to be afraid. Look at our out years as to what we're putting in for the Equipment Leasing Authority. So I am all for those vehicles, I will tell you that. That is where we should be focusing our efforts, I feel, and making sure our men and women are the ones plowing our streets, not some suburb. That's just my point. And that's, I want you to understand, Councilwoman, it's about jobs to the unions. They're protecting their jobs. If you're successful, we do it all over the city. All of a sudden, their whole union's for not, I mean, what's, what's the sense of it? I don't understand. It's, uh, we're just going to use people from other unions and we're going to eliminate our jobs. We're going to eliminate our workers' jobs is what you're talking, that's the way, that's the way they see it, Barb. That's what I'm telling you, okay? And that's, I, I think they have a legitimate, valid reason to see it that way. So, okay, that's it for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'll just reiterate that I think that while I support the concept and I apologize to the Councilwoman because I hadn't read the language myself, you know, until we sat here, that I am concerned about the kind of jumping ahead to contracting. Again, I don't ever like to pre-authorize our contracts. I know we do it left, right and all the time. But I think it would help calm the fears, the level of hostile footing, if we immediately just, you know, read the, this isn't the end of the conversation. You've raised some really, really good questions and there may be some really, really good creative answers. And so you could immediately just submit legislation calling on the administration to kind of report back and give us these answers and have this conversation. And that might result in a solution in time to need it. But this language was jumping a couple of steps. And I also respect that Councilwoman Warwick is a doer. Let's give her credit where it's due, right? So she's jumping ahead to the, the action item, but we, we do need to get a little fact-finding and information first. So that's what I would suggest. And also take this opportunity for a very fast, shameless plug for smaller vehicles. Because what we have learned repeatedly in every city department, the Director is smiling here, right? In the fire department, in our garbage, our waste haulers, and again here, is that when we have giant vehicles, that the entire national market that builds them has changed. And so there's basically effective monopolies. And so they just take years to even arrive, right? So we find the money, we pay the money, and then nothing happens. And, and our fleet doesn't have the vehicle. And then when they do arrive, it's that whole thing that got national news with the whole John Deere right to repair. Like John Deere was making instructors so nobody could repair them except John Deere. And so farmers are screwed because they couldn't use their vehicles. And so municipalities are facing the same thing. These giant vehicles come and then they just sit broken and no one can repair them because they're basically like unrepairable. They're just too specialized. And so I don't know that much about street sweeping and clearing, but I kind of want to just reiterate again that we should explore smaller, fixable, gettable vehicles. And then also thirdly to say that, yeah, you know, when we faced a shortage for snow clearing, we leased. So, I, you know, I'm in favor of that as well, like we need to explore these options. So I don't know if you want to respond to any of that, Director, but that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Shut your mic off.
Yeah.
That's what I used to do to Darlene Harris.
I, I concur, Councilwoman Gross. Like, I think we should be creatively exploring all of the options. Because again, our surrounding municipalities are committing four times the resources for snow and ice removal. That's just a fact. I don't see a reasonable path to getting the same level of commitment. That is the financial position that the city is currently in. And quite honestly, that's a significant investment. Such a significant investment, I, you know, my head kind of struggles to wrap around how I'd manage that type of enterprise. And so I think to your point, how do we get nimbler? How do we get more creative with those solutions? I'm all for that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion, third round?
One final comment. To what Councilwoman Gross just said, you know, I am for exploring, if you want to explore cooperation with other municipalities, I am not against that, but the union has to be at the table and they have to be okay with it. And if they're not, they're the ones with the, with the agreement. They're, they're the ones that have to be at the table and it even states that. So I, I'm, I'm not for voting on this today by any means, but I'm for, you know, if you want to sit down, I'd like to be part of that conversation, first of all, where I wasn't this time. And I'd like to sit down and talk about it. We'll bring the union heads in that are concerned and let's talk about cooperation. It might be trading vehicles or, you know, trading resources, just not jobs. When it comes to the employees, that's where it all goes haywire for the, for the unions and for me and I would say most of Pittsburgh that I know of anyway. So, so, so that's my thought. I would be glad to work with you on that. I would. Whatever, whatever you want to do. Explore with Munn Hall. I'd be glad to do it, but let's have the union at the table so they know. And so we know what we can or can't do, or what, if they're going to resist or not. So we know. And then we come to the table and then it's, should be smooth, you know? I mean, instead of surprising everybody, I was caught off guard today, yesterday when I saw it and the fact that you relayed it, I was like, I thought we were going to talk about it. So anyway, that's just my final note. I'd be glad to work with you as to how we can do this without jeopardizing jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I don't think I'm saying too much that hasn't already been said, but I wanted to state for the record that I also appreciate the creativity here. I don't think it fully takes into account the unintended consequences and the ripple effects and ramifications. So that's my major concern. I, I think that there's probably some other way to start this conversation on a pilot basis without it being so acrimonious and, and create so much tension with our partners and workers and the, the labor unions. And, you know, in consulting with Budget Office, I believe that this, the snowplows were already proposed in the 2026 budget. So I understand that this is sort of a putting it up front to make it known, but it's not as if it wasn't already proposed in the 2026 budget. You know, unclear when those snowplows and the vehicles would actually be ready for us to use, hopefully by February, but I don't think we know. But, um, so, yeah, I hope that we can, you know, move forward with a, a kind of different proposal that is creative, allows us to learn, but also doesn't conflict with the desires of, of lots of different interests here. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Are we voting on both as one bill or are we separating?
We read them together. So we would be voting on both 202062 and 20332 together. And if you would like to split your vote, you'd have to indicate that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I do just want to say for the residents, if you do live in bordering another municipality and, and you do feel frustrated at the fact that streets are, you know, just, streets get plowed in the winter and it comes right up to your line and, and, and the streets in Pittsburgh, I just, I do want you to know that there are members on this council who are trying to find those solutions. I will continue to press for similar solutions in the upcoming administration. But I do, it's something, you know, if you do have, have neighborhoods who border other municipalities, it is something that you hear all the time about why it comes right up my street and then stops. And there is frustration about that. And there is understanding among many residents that we used to work with the county or we used to work, I mean, no, I, I don't know the historical accuracy of, of statements, but you will hear that very often in community meetings, that this is something that the city used to do, that it's something that the city should be doing now and that we are here representing our residents. And my hope is that our partners in the labor unions, who are under attack right now, by the way, on a massive scale in this country, on a massive scale. Labor is under attack and it would behoove those of us Labor is under attack, and it would behoove those of us who support labor and who work with labor to encourage our partners to sit down and find solutions for our residents so that we can underscore how important it is, how important our labor unions are to, you know, well-being and family sustaining jobs, and just a better-run city, a better-run county, a better-run state, a better-run country. Because right now, that message is being eroded in a serious way nationwide by folks who do not have the best interests of labor at heart. So I'll leave it at that. Yeah, I guess we can vote. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. Two, two quick things. First and foremost, when you talk about municipalities, we, we should, they should be coming in and paving our roads because our taxpayer dollars go to Mon Hall. Our taxpayer dollars do not go to Mon Hall, as far as I know, in the city of Pittsburgh. And if you're talking about county now, if you want to call the county executive, I believe they're under the same unions that the city is, and that, that would be great. County help, same, same jobs, same unions, if they wanted to come in because we all pay county taxes. I'm absolutely for that, I will tell you. But, and, and when you say about the unions are under attack from a federal level, they feel they're under attack from a local level when you propose these things, I will tell you. So that's what they see. That's why we're throwing off the alarms. This is a tiny little thing. It's actually a good idea. Take out the employees, keep our employees driving those trucks. If you want to swap equipment, we could do that all day long, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of bills 2062 and 2332? Sorry, just checking my work here. Okay. Please indicate by saying aye. These were read together, so we're taking them together, and we will do a roll call vote. Oh, let's do a roll call vote. Sorry, the question was roll call vote on each one. If it was read together, if it's possible to split them up at this point, then yes, roll call vote on one and then the other, please.
On bill 2062, Mr. Sharland.
No.
Mr. Coghill.
This is the Mon Hall agreement?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley.
No.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
No.
Mrs. Warwick.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Aye. Uh, no, excuse me.
Two ayes, seven noes. And for bill 2332, Mr. Sharland.
No.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle.
This is on 2332, right?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kill Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two noes.
So 2062, motion fails. 2332, affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much. The deferred papers, bill 1964.
Bill 1964, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 1228 Heron Avenue at no cost to the city.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to hold 10 weeks.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion to hold, is there a second?
Second.
There were two seconds. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of a 10-week hold on bill 1964, please indicate by saying, or is it a discussion?
Yeah, what's the reason for the hold?
They don't have, they haven't even applied for their planning permit.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of a 10-week hold for bill 1964, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill be held. New papers, bill 2292.
Bill 2292, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 5804 Bryant Street at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of bill 2292, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, bill 2301.
Bill 2301, resolution authorizing execution of a deed pursuant to the Somerset Cooperation Agreement of 2002 by and between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of seven parcels located in the 14th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 88L, Lot 150, Block 88M, Lot 200, Block 88H, Lot 161, Block 128R, Lot 100, Block 128R, Lot 200, Block 129A, Lot 160, and Block 129N, Lot 40. Council District 5 at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I'm just curious what this bill does. Like, what the, this year, this?
I believe we have representatives from the Urban Redevelopment Authority here to provide insight if, if needed. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Geiger, Legislative Policy Director, City of Pittsburgh.
Good afternoon. Tally O'Brien, Government Affairs Analyst at the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh.
Good afternoon. M.L. Meyer, Director of Real Estate at the URA.
Oh, thanks. Just wanted to know a quick briefing on this.
So 2301, is that the bill we're on?
2301, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this is a resolution, as it says, authorizing the sale of seven parcels located in the Somerset-Afric Park development, so pursuant to a co-op that was signed in 2002 at the start of this development process. The city and the URA had an agreement that certain publicly improved spaces, so think, you know, parklets that exist within the development, once completed, would be transferred back to the city for public ownership and stewardship into the future. So that's what this bill is doing, and then i-if you don't mind, the, the next bill is a related one and probably makes sense to explain it this time as well. That is for parcels that are in the same location, generally speaking, though there are a few that are further outside of that, that are similar green space parcels that aren't subject to a existing co-op agreement, but that we also think makes sense for long-term stewardship by the city. I've had the, the honor and the privilege of working on this on both sides of the street, and that's why I'm explaining it to you all today, so.
Okay, I, I did have a question about 2302. Want to read the bill, or should I just, I don't know? I'll wait till the 2302 is read.
Any further discussion on 2301? Seeing none. All those in favor of bill 2301, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, 2302.
Bill 2302, resolution authorizing execution of a deed by and between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh for the sale of 21 parcels in the 10th, 14th, 16th, and 24th wards of the City of Pittsburgh, Council Districts 1, 3, 5, 7, and 9, to be dedicated as public green space at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second discussion.
Discussion. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't have the text file in front of me for this bill. I'm trying to, like, pull it up while I'm talking, but I'm told, and we, we, I read it last week. I just don't have it right in front of me. In this transaction, all of the parcels, which aren't listed, but I assume are listed in the text file, are being acquired by the city.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is the city council. Shouldn't we be authorizing a purchase? Or acquisition?
This, this is a resolute, apologies.
It feels like it's written for the URA board.
So it's a resolution authorizing execution of a deed at no cost to the city. So it is the city acquiring.
For the sale of 21 parcels. But we're not selling 21 parcels. We're purchasing 21 parcels. You're the seller.
That's correct.
And we're the buyer.
Well, I'm now with the city, so.
Oh, yeah, I forgot who you were. Sorry. You guys are the sellers, and David is the buyer.
Yeah, so the, some of the language convention is, yes, actually probably an old habit and a holdover from a previous job. However, if you read the full text of the, the legislation, it makes it clear that these are parcels currently owned by the Urban Redevelopment Authority that are being dedicated to the city as public green space at no cost to the city. Apologies if the title is not particularly clear in this case.
Yeah, I know, I am finicky about the titles. I don't think they should be misleading, you know, or they're too vague. And usually I'm complaining that they're too vague, so. Do you have the whole text file? Oh, my God, that's so awful. I'm trying to read it on a tiny screen. This is tiny font, I will actually say. I don't know if you, at home, if you can see how tiny this font is, but you have a big font.
There you go. Slightly bigger.
It's slightly bigger. So it is like, it's repeated in the title, in the text file, but the URA clearly is the owner of all these properties and has requested authorization to execute a deed between this, so for the, so anyway, honestly, I would be more comfortable with both in the title on the agenda and in the title in the body. Can we just say that? I don't know if the proper word is acquisition or purchase. Like, what are we doing? Doesn't matter.
I think either one of those words would be fine.
Okay. And do you have the attorney?
Well, I'm not the, I'm not an attorney.
Who's the attorney? I think we have the attorney.
No one hears him.
I'm really, honestly, it's the end of the agenda for the record. I can't figure out who anybody is, so for the record. Okay, so can I just do that, Madam Clerk? I'm just gonna make a voice amendment, if council members don't mind, thank you, and say this is, it says for the purchase. Right, and then repeated in the title sentence in the body of the text. Same thing for the purchase. I'm just striking out sale and putting in purchase. Because, you know, this is, for the one in my district, everyone's really, really excited about. This is super steep cliffside where it's like you've got invasive species. It's really contiguous to other parcels, if you recall, that I moved. I don't know, last year, before we moved some parcels into Greenway. Think about like the bluff above the Allegheny River when you're up, up, way, really upper Lawrenceville and borderline of Morningside, so it really shouldn't ever be built on. We have to add it to the Greenway. So I appreciate the, the URA working on this. But, okay, I just wanted to make double, triple sure because it said sale, and I'm like, good God, hopefully we're not selling property to you for your personal Greenway. It's city Greenway. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Did we actually vote on a motion? I didn't motion to amend on this.
You did not motion to amend.
Sorry. It's, again, long meeting. Motion to amend, bill 2302. Madam Clerk, we could strike out the word for sale, both in the title and the agenda and the title and the body, to replace the word sale with purchase. So that's, that was an official motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of the voice of verbal amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill is amended. Discussion on, on bill as amended. Councilman Wilson.
Well, it's great to have the parking authority here. I'm kidding. I'm joking, sorry. I just wanted to know, in the 24th ward, what parcels are being, you know, like, acquired or sold, I'm not sure what language we agreed upon. Because I have the numbers all memorized, so if you just say the parcel number, I'm gonna, I'm joking.
This is the-
Like, what are we talking about in 24?
This is the very downtown end of Washington's Landing. There's a little, basically park there.
Yeah, I know, yeah. You talking about where the tennis courts are?
No, no, the other end. Close to the pedestrian bridge, down at the end that's closest to downtown.
So it's just that one part?
Little, it's about 12,000 square feet, which is, I don't know, a quarter-ish of a, of an acre. And it's a, it's a green space there.
Has the URA been taking care of that?
To the, you know, I, I'm not sure about the answer to that question because there is an association at Washington's Landing, and it takes care of it. We contribute to that, but it's, there's an association that takes care of it.
Yeah, I understand there's like an, or like a cooperation agreement where that, so that's tied up in that, where like the businesses pay into that.
And residents, yeah.
And residents. Okay, is this all, like, on the riverfront?
Yes, it's the point, sort of this, whatever direction that is, I think. I don't, I'm sorry.
The face is west, it's the west side.
There you go. That, Councilman, that green area that's on, shown on that map is what we're talking about.
All right, and what is this, the city's all good with this to the main? Because there's been a lot of different discussions in the past in terms of who maintains what on, on that island, actually, so. What are we prepared to do?
The city's comfortable with these transfers. I just saw Director Hornstein actually walk out.
Yeah, but say he'd be a great person to have here.
Um, all of this has been reviewed with DPW, yes.
Okay, because I know there was a lot of requests to, like, cut back different trees that were there and different vines that were, you know, hurting the trees, whatever, okay. All right, I know that was a big undertaking. We kind of pushed back on some of that. So I just didn't know, the URA never did any sort of work. It was always within that. It's not like you hired a different, like, a contractor and-
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Councilperson Sharland, followed by Councilman Coghill.
I got my hand up just before you.
Did you?
Yeah. So I, no, I, I just wanted to say, I, I had no idea this was actually finally happening. We had been talking about moving the parcels in my district since, actually, the day I took office. It was, became a big initiative for us to try to consolidate the riverfront. This, the parcels that you're looking at in my district are, like, in front of the South Side Works, in between the South Side Works and the, the river. It's something that we knew we wanted to do. The URA doesn't, doesn't make sense for them to own that property anymore. For us to consolidate all of that and turn it into a riverfront park that we can have the city maintain is like, like the end goal there. I, again, I just kind of wish that I would have known about this before, right now, but I, I couldn't be more supportive of it. I frankly just would have liked to celebrate this a little bit more. And, you know, wish that I had the opportunity there, so. Thank you for moving this through. I'm glad this finally is happening, but, you know, would have, a little bit of heads up would have been nice, so, thank you.
Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Geiger, what is your new title? Because I, I see URA when I look at you still, but give us that title again.
Legislative and Policy Director.
For the city.
For the city.
For the city of Pittsburgh, okay, that's, I, because I, I'm, again, I can't get past it either, the URA thing. But, but I just did want to say to lots, as Councilwoman Gross was saying about on the bluff and, you know, these lots that should never be built on. I, I think, maybe we worked together, I don't know, but in my office, we identified ones that were near and budding Greenways and things like that, and we made them part of the green. Yeah, did we do that?
I did mine and mine, too.
Okay, so, so we did that, and number two, it takes that off our spreadsheet, right? When we, when people say, oh, yeah, the city of Pittsburgh has 17,000 lots. Why aren't they just building on them, right? Well, I'm gonna tell you, from what I see in my district, like, if 50% of them are buildable, I, that would be a high number. I would say it's probably more like 10% that you could actually build on. Most of them are in weeds and, you know, over hills, and they, they have to be a lot of this somebody, I guess, because they're a parcel of land, but we, again, maybe I got the idea from you, I don't know, but we fold them into-
I asked you to look at them. You didn't do yours, I did mine.
I don't know, I'll have to check what like on that, but, okay. Okay, that's, that's all, but I, I like getting them off the shelf, basically, you know what I mean? If we can incorporate them into park or other, some other form of, you know, verbiage that doesn't look like when people are looking at our city saying, well, why aren't, why aren't we selling them? Why aren't we building on them? It's like, well, here's the thing, it's like- It's like, well, here's the thing, it's like 10% maybe that we can actually sell or buy, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of bill 2302 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That concludes our Standing Committee's agenda. We have meeting announcements. This afternoon, with sessions at 1:30 and 2:30, council will hold a briefing on the 2026 budget. Tomorrow, Thursday, October 9th, at 11:00 a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bills 2152, 2153, 2154, 2155, and 2156 regarding the historic designations of the Ross and Aspenwell pumping stations, the Rachel Carson, Roberto Clemente, Rachel Carson Bridge, Roberto Clemente Bridge, and Andy Warhol Bridge, and Shenley Park. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m., the day of the hearing. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, October 14th, and Standing Committee's meeting on Wednesday, October 15th, both at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Council President.
Yes, I just want to remind all members that this Friday is the ACLU dinner.
Thank you.
ACLU?
Allegheny County Labor Council.
Yes, sorry, I apologize. Allegheny County Labor Council.
They added Fayetteville, they confused you even more, you know.
Yes, is this Friday. We have purchased a table of 10, so obviously all members are welcome to attend. I believe the door's open at 5:00. So just want to remind all members.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to excuse, well, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.